2013 Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, now in session.
Yes, I can. Please bow your heads. My name is Derek Gracious. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you this morning, Father. We thank you for all the many blessings, Lord, that you bestowed upon our county, Father, and our great nation. Lord, we ask that you be with those here in the room today, Father, as well as our leaders in Washington, Father. Just be with us all, guide and direct us in our decisions, Father. Thank you for the service of our men and women and their enforcers, Father, and we ask that you keep them safe. Be with their families, Lord, and give them comfort while they're away. Father, we ask this in the precious and holy name. Amen.
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America, true and holy, which stands one nation under God, in the visible, fair, just as long.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today to our county commission meeting. Before we pass the motion on the consent agenda, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to speak on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Tom Sam wants to speak in reference to the right to speak.
Tom Sam, 1730 County Road 386, Weewahatchee. The issue I have is the memo that you put in the consent agenda that said you can go to the clerk's office to read what the ordinance said. Between the agenda and the info, you had over 150 pages of information, but you couldn't even put two pages of the ordinance so that people could see what it says, so they would have an idea if they wanted to speak or not. I don't understand that. Are you trying to hide what's in it, or what?
Mrs. Tom Sam, I'm finna be flat with this, because I've heard it too many times. Pam Smiley ain't trying to hide nothing.
Well, I mean, however, the ordinance in there, some people could read it to see what it said, and then they would know if they wanted to come up here and speak about it.
Well, now, we didn't have the commissioners, because I, with this, talking about hiding stuff, I really, because that's going to be on my...I don't know no one up here who's trying to hide something, or trying to stick something away.
Okay. My question is, if I was to run the consent agenda so people could read it to see if they even wanted to come and speak about it. Good time.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the Senate Bill 50 was passed and was signed by the governor this summer. We actually introduced that proposed ordinance, I publicly read it to you all, over a month ago. Provided on the bar out there, the actual Senate bill that passed and made that ordinance available more than five weeks ago. It was advertised in the local paper. It has been over a month and a half for public comment with regards to those two pages. And customary with what we do with others is we put that public notice through the clerk's office in the agenda to know that there's going to be a public comment. I've received considerable comment with regards to the ordinance that's going to be read. It's not in the consent agenda today. It was actually a public hearing that comes after the consent agenda. On the agenda number two is pages one through 143. The actual ordinance itself comes on the page 145. There'll be public comment in accordance with that state law that passed and that became effective on October 1st, later on in this meeting. But right now, specifically with regards to the consent agenda, not the ordinance.
Well, I would still think if you're gonna have another public comment, he's gonna read it, but you need to look at it and see what it says also.
It was made available to the public and general public, as the county attorney says. I don't know what more we can do. We've done that with every ordinance.
When was it made?
Five weeks ago. He laid them right there on the deal for the public to see.
But at the last meeting, there was comments that changes, that recommended changes be made. So if changes were made, we don't know if they're in there, or put in there, or what it was. The thing on the last meeting was the, I believe it was the thing that came out of the state, out of Tallahassee.
We'll get into this during the public comment period, but with regards to the actual changes, the last meeting was a public reading. I did that for the benefit of the public. There was no public hearing on the ordinance last two weeks ago. The commissioners, various commissioners offered comments on it. But today is when they actually take the action during the public hearing. If you read the title of the actual ordinance, it says, and it provides for a provision for modification after public comment, that would be today, on October 22nd, not two weeks ago. This is the public hearing. Everyone was notified through the paper to show up, offer the public comment. Then you'll take an action. If you want to make a modification, it'll be done today, not two weeks ago. And that, we'll get to that after the consent.
Do you have anything else from the public on the consent agenda? We don't have nothing?
Mr. Chairman, there is, everybody's got in front of you, your little correction on one of the minutes. We'll include that correction in the consent agenda, if y'all don't mind.
Can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I would like to pull...
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
I'd like to pull pages 136 and 137, just for discussion.
You can include that in my motion to pull 136.
Okay. I got a motion by Mr. Yeager. I get a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. McMoore. This is Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed?
Yep. I abstain.
Got one abstain. Got motion carries, oh, with one abstain.
Mr. Chairman, if you can, Commissioner McMoore, if you'd state the purpose of the abstention, and Ms. Carroll, how you felt the form?
There's a lame news change in there that concerns me. Good, Mr. Chairman.
You just, yeah, you simply need to state the record, and then when the form, Ms. Summers will have you fill out the form and put it on the record if you abstain. But you need to state it for the record.
You can move, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner McMoore, specifically with regards to itemized pages, or is it the entire consent agenda?
Well, let's just do the whole agenda. We'll do the whole agenda. Motion carries, oh, with one abstain. You gonna go with those, so, the pages you said, Ms. Grace?
136.
137. I just would like to hear some discussion regarding this policy, on what the intent is of the use of the policy and the application. It's a little bit broad. I think it can be used as a very good tool, but I just, maybe the county attorney can speak to it a little bit of what the intent is of the policy and how it should be applied.
Mr. Chairman, do this...
And I will, I'd be happy to. I'm just looking for the provision in here. I think it provides the actual intent of the policy.
That, I'm assuming that you drafted it.
Actually, I work with the administrator on the policy.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Not at all. Just, I'm looking for, here it is. "The delegation of daily operational tasks and management are assigned to the administrator by the commission with the intent and purpose of facilitating the consistent and authorized scope of work and completion of required county staff functions." That sentence is providing the intent on the policy.
Now, it does say that it applies to commissioners, county employees, county vendors, and professionals under the direction and supervision of the county administrator. So how would this policy apply to a commissioner's interaction with you as the county attorney?
Absent express direction, vote in action of the Board of Commissioners in the public meeting, the county administrator is authorized as a designated county personnel to administer the daily assignment, management, oversight, and operations of county staff, vendors, subcontractors, and designated professionals. And specifically to your question, I would anticipate, Mr. Butler, me being a designated professional.
So are you saying that a county commissioner would not directly reach out to you as the county attorney, but would need to go through the county administrator?
No, not at all.
Okay. So my other concern here, and again, I do think that this can be used as a very useful tool for organizational purposes and to allow the county administrator to manage the work assignments for the staff. I do want us to keep in mind this, statute 12574 of the Florida statutes, that thus is the county administrator's duties, and in section two of that statute, that it clearly states that his duties are administrative or ministerial in nature and should not delegate any governmental power imbued to the board. And I just want to say that, that we, I think we need to be cautious with this. And one other issue is, I think on the other side of this policy is that we need to have some type of a report from the county administrator. I have folks in the community that are asking me why they are not privy to the county administrator's reports, but I don't receive any reports. So I think that we need to consider doing some type of a report. It doesn't have to be lengthy or detailed, but of the work that's being done, summary of the work orders, or some type of a report that we can discuss and work through. That would be a communication tool between the county administrator, the board, and the public. So it's just a suggestion. I'm not...
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think some of the other kinds. I think what this policy does for us is, you know, there's many counties moving to county managers instead of county administrators, and we haven't got there yet. However, this, I think this policy follows a little bit of what other counties are doing towards their county manager, but I'm not opposed to. I'd move to adopt the policy, and as we move forward, I know there'll be changes that we want to make to different policies. So I think if we can go ahead and adopt the policy and see how it works, and then make the changes if there needs to be. So moved, Mr. Chair, for 136, 137.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
All ready, yes.
Motion carries, four, four and oh with one extension.
(inaudible)
From Weewahatchee Medical Clinic.
Good morning. I'm Katrina Saunders, the center manager for the Weewahatchee Medical Center. Weewahatchee Medical Center is one of Gulf County's federally qualified health care center. We provide primary medical care. One of my responsibilities as the center manager is to update the governing body of our county on how we're doing as a center in using the federal funds that we receive. The paper that I just gave you is the patient demographics for the 2012 year. I will be back early next year in 2014, and I'll have an update and be able to do some comparison between 2012, 2013. Right now, we're running at about 50% of our capacity. We're excited to say that in April of this year, a doctor was hired for the clinic. So in addition to our physician's assistant, we now have a medical doctor. We're here to serve the entire needs of the community medically, birth through senior citizens. We have a vaccine, vaccines for all ages. We are not a vaccine for children's site yet, but we are working towards that with the Florida Department of Health. And I anticipate sometime within the next six months that we will be part of that program, and we'll be able to offer those vaccines as well. In addition to just typically the insurances that are given, you know, accepted through most of our doctors' offices, we also accept the sliding fees. So if our uninsured neighbors in the community were a good resource for them. Just some center news to share with you. We're continuing to accept new patients. Right now, we do have the flu vaccines up and running for anyone ages four and up. And as far as the Affordable Healthcare Act goes, when that becomes readily usable by the public, North Florida Medical Corporation, which is the corporation that Weewahatchee Medical Center is part of, we will be hiring outreach and enrollment workers, so that if there are community members who need help navigating that process, then we'll have someone who'll be coming into Weewahatchee that they can schedule appointments with and be able to help them out with that. The rest of the demographics just shows that we're really about 30% of our population are needy, that we're helping out. And last year, we provided $130,000 worth of services to the uninsured in our area and saved patients about $43,000 through our prescription program partnership with ByRight. So thank you for your support of the medical center, and I'll be sending each of you some more information on the center, so that if you have constituents who are concerned about health care, that, you know, you can pass that information on to them. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to comment on this. I think it's a good report. This is a good report. And what bothers me with Gulf County and our health department, we have medical fields that's progressing. They're moving forward. They're putting new patients on. We have a neighboring county, Mr. Doug Kemp, who is building new health department buildings, who also has money to donate to the United Way over there. But yet, we have a manager here in Gulf County who can't keep the health department open in Weewahatchee. I just wanted to make that comment to the board. So y'all, we need to look at all of this. There's a problem there with management with Gulf County. There's been a problem since day one. If other people can do this, something wrong with our manager. I just wanted to make that comment.
Chairman. Katrina, just record and all, and people will be viewing this on television over their computers, the fact that this is not just restricted to the Weewahatchee area.
No, sir. No, sir.
Make that clear.
We are here to...
Who is available?
It is available to all of Gulf County, and actually even our neighbors in Bay County as well. And thank you for bringing that up. Gulf County, Weewahatchee, you know, is a small community, and we have the capacity to serve more than the Weewahatchee community. We'll be doing a business outreach sometime in the next several months, where actually I'll personally be going to our business neighbors in Mexico Beach and the Callaway area, and in Port St. Joe, to talk with them if their employees have any questions about not the insurance part of health care, but where do I find quality health care that we'll be able to, you know, give them some information that they can share with their employees.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey Winter with CDPG Housing Program.
Hey, doing very well. Good morning. First and foremost, I just kind of wanted to say it's a pleasure coming back for you again. It's been quite a while since I've had the pleasure of coming for this commission. We've worked with county staff, and as well as the county attorney, to overcome quite a few challenges and circumstances, complex circumstances, leading up to this point here where we find ourselves today. And as a result, we've prepared our recommendation of award to include a summary agenda to summarize all of the requested board agenda items for action. However, before we come back around to that, I'd like to read through the recommendation of award to kind of identify some of those complexities and make sure that we have a firm understanding of everything that we've encountered leading up to this point, prior to addressing any questions the commission may have, and then coming back to the summary agenda. If I may, I just want to indicate, of course, bids were accepted and opened on October 17th for 13 housing rehabilitation projects as part of Gulf County CDPG Housing Rehab Program. Total of seven pre-qualified contractors submitted bids for consideration, and the results are detailed on the attached bid tabulation sheet. We have completed line item review of each accepted bid, and the data reflected in this bid tabulation sheet represents the results of our line item review. So prior to presenting our recommendation of award, one of the first items the county commission must consider is whether or not, how to address one of the bids, sets of bids from one of your pre-qualified contractors that submitted their bids after the noticed bid deadline. We've spoken with the county attorney about this, and I believe he may be a little bit more prepared to discuss the circumstances associated with that. However, our recommendation of award is going to be contingent upon the county commission's decision on whether or not to accept or reject those bids. Attorney Novak, if you don't mind discussing that a little bit more?
I do. I'll give my comments after you're done.
Okay, great. All right. Well, with that being said, should the county commission decide to accept those delinquent bids, our recommendation of award for the contracts for the 13 prioritized recipients would include the award of one project to Brian Co. Services, the GC09 Williams Project, in the amount of $98,244. The award of three projects to Crest Enterprises, the GC05 Ernest Project, in the amount of $38,125. The GC11 Lucas Project, in the amount of $23,100. And the GC13 ArtiMakeA Project, in the amount of $15,275. It would include the award of three projects to Florida Homes Incorporated, to include the GC01 Project, Anderson, in the amount of $77,575. The GC03 Moore Murray Project, in the amount of $84,660. And the GC04 Porter Project, in the amount of $78,725. It would include the award of three projects to Gulf to Bay Development and Construction for three projects, the first being GC02 Seabrooks, in the amount of $29,966.83. The GC06 Covin Project, in the amount of $34,457.39. And the GC10 Levens Project, in the amount of $10320.7. And lastly, if the county commission decided to accept those bids, it would include the recommendation of award for three projects to Raymond A. Drysback LLC, for the GC07 Bowers Project, for $22,377. The GC08 Butler Project, for $102,654. And the GC12 Project, Cargill, for $90,030. Alternatively, should the county commission decide to reject the delinquent bids, for the most part, all of those would be the same, with the exception of the awards to Crest Development, where those projects would be awarded to Cathy Construction and Development, for the GC05 Ernest Project, in the amount of $45,149. The GC11 Lucas Project, in the amount of $37,655. And the GC13 Gay Project, in the amount of $26,463. With all other recommended awards being the same. Depending on the county commission's decision, either accept or reject those delinquent bids, the county will be encumbering approximately, it'll be either $795,509.29, or $828,276.29, through the award of those projects. The county's current CDPG Housing Rehab Program has $580,000 budgeted through the Housing Rehab Demolition Replacement Line Item, and that would require the initial commitment of ship funding to be either $215,509.29, or if they rejected the bids, $248,276.29 in ship leverage funds. Additionally, we anticipate multiple change orders to come forward after we receive reports on septic systems, plumbing systems, for example, well systems from certified contractors, subcontractors, that would justify some additional costs, as well as any unforeseen circumstances, for example, for roof replacement, where we're not able to analyze the shape, the condition of anything up underneath the shingles until they have an open roof inspection. So with that being said, we would recommend approximately 15% to be held aside, set aside, to address any of those unforeseen circumstances or anticipated change order items. With that being said, we would recommend, for planning purposes, to have a total commitment of approximately $350,000 in ship leverage funds to be set aside, to be available for those initial commitments associated with this recommendation of award and all anticipated change orders. So our recommendation has been prepared based upon discussions with county staff to ensure that sufficient ship funding, ship leverage funds are available to accommodate for that commitment. And so we're presenting our recommendation of award with a request for the county commission's concurrence and authorization to proceed. We're scheduling the pre-construction conferences to execute contracts for all 13 projects. It is important to note that you've got some requirements within your housing assistance plan that have to be considered. It's the objectives and policies associated with how this program's administered, and it would require the county commission to formally acknowledge, identify those sections that would require waivers, and to approve of those waivers in order for us to move forward in that manner. And I'll go through some of those. The first request for waiver we would recommend has to do with, it's in chapter four, section B. It states limitations of approximately $65,000 per single-family detached structure through the CDPG Housing Rehab Program. As, there are seven of 13 projects that are demolition, new construction projects that exceed that $65,000 limit. We have attributed that amount to a number of factors, including additional costs associated with required tree removal, wheelchair accessibility accommodations for disabled households, compliance with elevation requirements for projects located within the 100-year flood plain, and reasonable fluctuations in the local residential construction market. It should also be noted, our housing rehab specialist, when he put together his estimates, also accounted for those additional costs. However, this housing assistance plan was put together in 2010, and at the time, we were using the best information available to us. It's been a number of years since then, and we've seen an increase in those costs. So that's, a lot of the additional costs are associated with just the fact that there are fluctuations in that market. Additionally, there's a section in the housing assistance plan that restricts each contractor to no more than one project until they've successfully completed a project. As we've only had seven contractors participate in 13 projects, it would be in the county's best interest to waive that, to ensure all projects could be contracted simultaneously, to ensure every opportunity to have these projects completed in a timely manner. Another section within your housing assistance plan that we would recommend waiving is the requirement to award bids within 15% above or below our housing rehab specialist estimates. We have taken a look at this. There's a requirement also in your hat that restricts contractors no more than three awards. When we do that, it puts us in a position where we can't recommend the lowest responsible bidder on all of these projects, as the lowest responsible bidder may be overwhelmed with three projects already. And for that reason, the next lowest responsible bidder to be considered would exceed that 15% for up to four projects. Of course, that's contingent upon whether or not the county commission decides to accept or reject the bids, as is a number of those projects. But we've detailed those as well, that would require county commission's consideration of a motion to waive that requirement. With that being said, we helped the county develop this housing assistance plan. We developed some language to include within this housing assistance plan that provided the county commission the authority to grant those waivers. Specifically, in chapter two, section B, part five, which states, "Allow flexibility in administering the programs in order to meet the program's goals and objectives." The county commission may waive program rules only when the result will be consistent with established goals, objectives, and applicable federal, state, or local regulations. Again, we worked with county staff and the commission dating back to April of 2010 to put that language in place in the event circumstances such as these arose, that would require the county commission's consideration of waivers. With that being said, we would be more than happy to address any questions I'm sure the county commission would have, as this is quite a lot of information, before coming back to the summary agenda, to request individual action from the commission.
Do I have anything from the board?
Yes. Mr. Reynolds, drag you up to chair. We've got 13 units, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. When is it completion? I keep, I got up this morning, pulled a clock, went back over this and made these notes.
Yes, sir.
And what you just got through, saying, I don't know who comprehended it all, I couldn't. And a lot of waive, and exempt, and overlook, and all like that.
I understand.
When is it completed? You said we had to complete, but you just mentioned we'd waive, the board could waive the completion date. Am I correct there, or have we got to have these completed at a certain deadline?
We do have a deadline associated with...
What is that deadline?
That would be in February.
Oh, 2014?
2014, yes, sir.
All right. Okay.
For that reason, we would recommend the award of all of the projects.
All right. Now, my, just hold up, just a minute. All right. How many local bidders of these 13? How many local bidders?
Majority of the contractors participating, my understanding, are local. We have a requirement where we cannot...
We have, uh, a requirement where we cannot, uh, we cannot exclude participation from, from, for just local contractors. But one thing we did do is we contracted, uh, we contacted the, uh, building department to get a list of local contractors. So not only did we advertise and solicit applications, but we also contacted your local contractors individually to encourage them to participate. Uh, so we would have every opportunity to bring in as many local contractors as possible.
All right, now, my next question.
Yes, sir.
Was any one contractor that was low on all thirteen?
Not on all thirteen. You had two contractors that, uh, if you were awarding them solely to the lowest bidders, would receive six and five respectively of these thirteen projects.
I've seen where you've got one in three, 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 which I think that would be fair there. Will any of these, uh, houses, homes, they be on stilts or maybe a professional word, pilings?
Yes, there will be one project, that's the G C ten Levens project that would be constructed on pilings and in addition there are.
Wood piling or concrete piling?
Concrete pilings.
Concrete piling.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Uh, one word I don't like in here, we've got X number of dollars, we're gonna do thirteen change orders. Now that's where you can get took to the cleaner.
Oh, absolutely.
Right there. We take on thirteen projects and we wind up, we don't have enough money to do eight. I'm gonna have some people that are gonna be watching.
I understand, uh, that's always a consideration whenever you look at.
Those are the people that getting this, they need this help.
Absolutely.
They need it. And, uh, I've worked on this for quite a bit for area and I know the chair here, commissioner. Oh yeah, I think we've got some in all five districts here of this. All right, we'll get to another thing, what about any of them, will any of them have to have handicap? I knew you hit on that a while ago, like showers, uh, water clogs, smokes, uh, handrails, any, any of that?
Yes, sir.
Any of these being involved there?
Yes, sir. All of the homes that have submitted, uh, documentation to support a physical handicap or mobility restriction.
All right, well, these bidders will weigh some out of any of this work?
I'm certain they, they will.
Who's gonna inspect the work?
Not only will your building official inspect the work, but also our housing rehab specialist, uh, who is a contractor himself, uh, will also be inspecting those for quality work.
All right, you touched on this earlier, what about, who approves the draws when they get a portion, or do they have to complete it before they get any? Will there be draws in this?
There will be draws and that's, uh, that's detailed within your housing assistance plan. Uh, we will be reviewing each and every one of the application certification for payment packages to recommend payment to the county commission.
Who, who will make that recommend to approve for the payment?
I will be responsible for reviewing every application and certification for payment.
Okay, uh, contractors, do they meet all the requirements? Do they, uh, we went through a, still going through a trouble spot that, uh, are they bonded? They have a workman's comp, or do they meet all the requirements to do this, do these particular jobs?
All of the requirements that outlined in your half have been, uh, satisfied by the contractors, uh, with the exception to automobile insurance, which we've received, uh, confirmation from those that did not have it secured, that they would present documentation prior to executing contracts. Uh, and that was something that was forwarded through and we made sure that in order for us to move forward, that documentation would have to be in place.
All right. What about any penalty days?
Uh, liquidated damages are incorporated within your housing assistance plan equal to approximately, let's say, one hundred dollars per day, uh, possibly two hundred dollars per day.
All right. Any of these homes, and you touched on it, but I'm just trying to get it out there.
I understand.
People's gonna watch this on television and, uh, the audience.
Yes, sir.
Any wells have got to be put down?
There's a possibility for well systems.
Possibility.
Yes, for well systems and septic systems.
All right, you'll have to go through the health department and.
Yes, sir.
Building department permitting there, okay. You have plans each job?
Say again?
Plans.
We have, uh.
You gotta have a plan.
We have specified work write-ups and bid forms for all projects as well as sealed plans and specifications for the new construction projects.
All right, and these specs, what about like shingles? Does it say the weight of the shingles, are we gonna use shingles? I'm just, solid doors versus, what I'm trying to get away, I don't, seventy spends, seventy percent of your contractors usually busting. I'm serious.
Okay.
Just look over the trend. Solid doors or trailer house doors? Look, when this gets done, we spend this money, I want some quality there.
I believe they're solid.
I don't want trailer house cabinets put in and two years later they fall off the wall, I don't want that.
Abs- absolutely, I understand that concern. All doors.
Understand them?
Yes.
All right, look out after these people.
We are. Yes, and your specifications include, uh, metal roofs, uh, I believe, uh, and they're all specified as far as the proper gauge metal roof, um, all of that's detailed within your work write-up and plans and specifications.
Now, the ones that, with the homes, that are gonna get new homes and there's some in, I don't know if in all the districts, I, I think three, maybe four districts.
Okay.
They will have to be relocated. Is that factored in to this, to relocate them while the construction's going on, or is that on, or they just have to take care of that themselves?
When we prepared the application for this program.
Okay.
We did budget funds to be set aside.
Okay.
I do need to get the commission's, um, some direction on what limit you'd like to set for that because there are fifteen thousand dollars set aside specifically to assist for temporary location expenses.
For unit fifteen or just?
No, sir, across, it's, it's one budget line item for fifteen thousand.
One budget line item, good deal, fifteen thousand dollars, okay. All right, Jeffrey Hall. All right, that's pretty much, that's enough for me.
Mr. McDaniel, I want, since you touched up on this, I have an issue here also with the, with the contractors. We had one contractor here, it's a Gulf to Bay Development Construction.
On this one?
Yes.
Gulf to Bay. All right, it shows three units.
Mm-hmm. On that one. But anyway, my point is, we've had trouble with this company before. This company has actually costed taxpayers, excuse me, thousands of dollars of fines. And I have a major issue with that, major concern with that. It was discussed, maybe not voted on, but it was discussed back when this issue came about, that we wouldn't let that contractor do any more work for us. So, and, and Mr. Jeffrey, this is on your project down at Selena's Park, where we got into trouble with this.
I, I, I think, Mr. W- Mr. Winter's qualified, all the, all the contractors, I think at the end of the day, the problems that we had weren't anything to do with the quality of the construction. It was the, it was the way that the construction was done on, on top-down construction and understanding what D E P require, requirements were. However, I think, and we've worked with Jordan Associates, uh, I appreciate the questions that, that, uh, Mr. Mclemore has brought up, I mean, Ms. McDaniel has brought up. But, uh, you know, uh, we've worked with Jordan Associates for a number of years, Jeffrey, I, I don't know, probably fifteen, twenty years. And they've always, I, I don't know of any issues that we've ever had with, with Jeffrey and them, you know, following through with procedure.
But, I don't know if they were, they are aware of this issue that we've had with this company, you know? We had an issue there that costed the taxpayers a lot of money, because of this one company.
Yes, sir.
Who is included with this bid. I will not support this contractor.
And I, and I understand, we are aware of the, uh, issues the county's had with this contractor in the past, uh, not specifically of the details, but we knew that there was reason to, to investigate it and make sure that our recommendation didn't include anything that would become problematic. Now, uh, according to your housing assistance plan, there are certain criteria that the contractors, in order to participate, have to meet. Uh, and, and I can state that, uh, Gulf to Bay, we did a review on them, just as we did with every other contractor. None of the contractors that are participating right now have been listed in the excluded party listing system, uh, or have been found guilty of any public entity crimes that would preclude them from being able to participate. So with that being said, uh, whatever issues the county's had in the past have not been reflected through the, uh, criteria that we have to use in order to qualify each individual contractor.
Okay, that's fine, but it's been reflected to me.
I understand.
And I have my opinion and I have my vote.
Absolutely.
So, you know, if y'all wanna move forward with it, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm satisfied with the contractor.
Yeah, I won't support him.
I have a couple of questions. Um, regarding the, the waiver to go over the sixty-five thousand dollar limit.
Correct.
Some of these are considerably over that, a hundred thousand, a hundred and two thousand. Did I understand you correctly that the estimates may be low because they're a couple of years old and you're, and you are relying on older figures? Is that the reason that the estimates are so far off?
The sixty-five thousand was not reflected in our estimates. Our estimates were consistent with the bids that came in, uh, for all of the new construction projects. The sixty-five thousand dollars is a number that's listed in your housing assistance plan that was developed back in two thousand and ten. Um, ideally, if we could address this, uh, prior to this meeting, I would say it'd be a good idea to update the housing assistance plan to reflect, uh, the fluctuations in the market and, as well as the other factors, uh, that may not have been considered when sixty-five thousand dollars was set in your housing assistance plan.
So when you're giving the figures here, for example, there's just one here that's fifty-two point forty-eight percent above estimate.
Okay.
And it says it's of your housing rehabilitation specialist's estimates?
Correct. That is, that is, that is based upon our housing rehab specialist's estimates.
So, um, some of these are just considerably off of the estimate and that's my concern of why they're so far off.
And I will state, uh, with that particular project, that award for the project that would be fifty-two point four-eight percent above our estimates is only, uh, applicable if the county commission decides to reject the, uh, delinquent bids. However, the, uh, price for that bidder that submitted late bids, uh, was within our housing rehab specialist's estimates. So with that being said, you're looking at, uh, either fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars or twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, and, but that's only one of them, there's some others here.
Correct.
Almost thirty-six percent, almost thirty percent, almost thirty-two percent above, those are all above the estimate. And I'm just trying to understand why they would be so far over the estimates.
Well, the, uh, the thirty-five point seven-seven percent is also applicable for the same conditions we just described, if Crest is accepted. Their bid was within the fifteen percent margin. Uh, the G C oh-nine Williams project, we had bids that came in within fifteen percent, however, because we can only award up to three projects, we had to go to the next and then the next, and, and that's the reason why it drove that up. And the G C eleven Lucas project, for the very same reasons. We had projects, two bids that ca- three bids, I'm sorry, that came in at a lower cost, however, because they were capped at three, we had to keep going down the line until we arrived at this bid, so.
I think it's a valid concern to award more than three, they may not be able to handle that much work.
Yes, ma'am.
We got, uh, no representation in January, you might, uh, wear February full month.
Now, I'll just go ask, uh, I know you've got some more questions, but while we're on this particular subject, Jeffrey, did, did, I think we got about five contractors. Did they bid on every project pretty much, or, or did you have more than one bid on, on every project?
We did have more than one bid on every project, but not every bidder submitted, uh, bids for everyone. If you look at the bid tabulation sheet here.
Yes.
You'll see there's some that were only interested in bidding on the new construction projects, there were some that, uh, didn't, decided not to submit bids at all. So, um, with that being said, we, I can guarantee you, we do have more than one bid on each and every project, but because of those limitations, we weren't able to consider all of those bids.
And, and the new construction projects, the amount includes demolition as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I have another question, and this is about, Mr. Lowry, you may be able to answer this, and this is just for my clarification, your memorandum with the, the ship C P G recipient approvals up to forty thousand?
That's right.
Is that included in the number we have here for the bids in that amount, or is that of, over and above?
It'll be included in that amount.
Okay.
Uh, these six I have here, uh, due to the increase, uh, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to up the additional, uh, ship funding, so we're gonna need to ask the board for this, the approval of these six as well.
But it is included in these amounts?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You did, one question. Jordan Associates did bid here and then compared, was noticing, particular sheet here, which I pulled off the computer this morning, where Jordan Associates, they showed a fifteen above, fifteen below. You did, that's, that's.
Those are, yes.
Uncommon, that's not uncommon in bidding there.
Uh, that they exceed fifteen percent, is, is that your question? Yes, sir, that's not uncommon. Uh, and again, a lot of it has to do with the circumstances we described. I believe with every one of these we had, uh, with the exception of the G C thirteen project, if Crest bids were not accepted, we had bids that came in within fifteen percent of our estimates.
Sure.
Again, it's just the circumstances.
And you're late to base line down.
Correct, yes, sir.
Or, okay.
Yes, sir, all right.
Juan, do you have anything?
Um, no, sir, I, I don't have anything additional to add. Mr. Jeffrey has, um, presented it all very clearly, um, the, and, and like he explained, we receive, we had two bidders that, that kinda racked up all the projects, but there was concern that they wouldn't be able to, to complete six or seven projects in, in a couple of month period, plus you have in your plan that you're only gonna allow three per contractor. So, um, he, he's covered everything. I guess what we need to determine at this point, we've got several things we need for you to make decisions on, and I don't know how you want to address those, if you wanna just take them one at a time, um, because I know some of the things, a couple of you have to abstain on, so I don't know exactly, um, what order you wanna take those in. So we'll let the attorney jump in now.
Jeffrey and, uh, and I discussed, uh, the recommendations on Friday, as well as the, uh, recommendations on the half amendments. Um, and you had mentioned earlier about possibly amending them in the future versus suspending them right now, so we'll get to that. The first issue that's before you that, uh, Jeffrey mentioned earlier is with regards to the entire process. It was a very thorough process, um, this is, uh, the culmination of a lot of work. Last week on the deadline, you'll note in the second page of Jeffrey's report, he mentioned a delinquent, uh, contractor. And I just wanted to give all five of you the benefit of the background on that. Um, in the initial notice that was sent out, um, for the R F P and the bid bidding process, the original notice indicated to report to Ms. Kapinski's office in the Robert Moore Building, um, and then it was later amended. Uh, one of the contractors actually showed up before the deadline in Ms. Kapinski's office on the date, uh, the deadline for the submission of the bids. When he was advised to go to the clerk's office on the amended notice, he left the facility, went around, went through security, and by the time he got there, it was past the twelve o'clock deadline. Um, he spoke with the staff, he was on site, he was in the Robert Moore Building, he was in here, according to the original notice, to turn it into Ms. Kapinski, at which time they later changed the amended notice, and it was in the clerk's office. So it was punched in at twelve oh nine. Um, and we spoke with the staff and there's no intent or, uh, mal-intent, the, the gentleman was here, and by the time that he went through the security that we now have in place, it was a couple of minutes past the deadline. So, that is the first issue we all needed to decide, if you will, uh, if you vote to suspend that and accept those, then we can move on with Jeffrey's recommendations and Ms. Kapinski's, and we can focus on the actual, um, the original list versus the second amended.
Correct.
Why, how do the board feel about that, what the attorney just brought before?
No, I, I, I think at the end of the day, if you think that, that, the amended notice, did it, did you just not get the amended notice that, of, of where to put in, or, or what was his comment there?
He, all contractors were, uh, emailed the notice to bidders. Originally, it did indicate to Juan Kapinski's office. Within a matter of a couple of hours, they revised notice to bidders, was, uh, forwarded to all contractors within the same email. Um, so yes, they, it was submitted, however, he referenced the original notice to bidders.
Jeffrey, my, only other question, I know these C D B G grants are, are, I mean, they're scrutinized by, you know, by the federal government and everybody else, but, uh, if it wouldn't be anything, if we allowed that bidder, I mean, there's, couldn't be any issue with it.
So long as it's formally addressed in the commission, then, uh, there would not create any issues.
I have a question. Calling back, maybe a couple of years ago, this came up, we're in an eastern time zone here in Port Saint Joe and some of the contractors in central time and, uh, back in my brain over, thought we had moved that twelve noon cutoff to five in the afternoon. People traveling, someone happened to drive down, I, I'm, 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 I can research it, but it, it does come back that we, we, uh, I'm not trying to cover for this contractor, any contractor, but that did come up one of our meetings, about the cutoff being twelve.[1762.33]
We, we actually had a special, we had a special bid opening and, and bid submission for these bids, because some contractors came from out of town, and so we actually opened them on the same day that we received them. We received them until twelve, and then we opened them at one, so that the contractors could be here for the bid openings. So, this one was handled a little differently than most of our bids, because most of them we receive until four or four-thirty on Friday, and then we open them on Monday.
Now, my next question, was this gentleman or his representative just stated, you verify he was here for this late bid? Was he in this building? I mean, it was just stated. Will you verify that?
I was actually, I was actually in the clerk's office for the bid opening. He was actually, he went over to your office, over to the county commission office and spoke with Tammy. And Tammy called the clerk's office, I believe, and asked where the bids were supposed to be turned in. I, I, he may have come to see me, but I was over in the clerk's office for the bid opening. Or at lunch, I can't, I might have been at lunch, but I was.
Jeffrey, do you, do you have a recommendation as, as far as that, or you just think that we need to make that decision and move forward?
Well, technically, yes. This is a local decision. I, I will state this, as far as recommendation, you would realize cost savings by accepting these bids. It would eliminate a couple of these projects where you would have to consider waiving that fifteen percent on. Regardless, that would still have to be considered, but you'll save some funding by accepting it. So, really, it's, it's up to your discretion.
It's up to the board. I, I don't have a major problem with that.
Here's the issue, he was, he was where he was supposed to be at the right time. So, how can you default him for that?
That's like.
I can't.
Go to vote. Time runs out. If you get in a line, you still get to vote. They don't toss you.
But, he, he went to where he was supposed to go.
We all want a motion to that, we'll move forward. So moved to accept that.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager. I think second.
As we.
About Mr. Macklemore for the discussion, Mr. Attorney.
I want to remind the commissioners of the additional step, which is to abstain if there is, if you've already entered, we've submitted the forms to Mr. Winter, any abstentions of the commissioners that need to abstain from the votes, I would tell you. And if you do accept this motion, we'll look at the first page right here under Crest Enterprises. There's GCO five, GC eleven, GC thirteen. If the motion is to accept those.
Are you, are you saying that we're kin to some of them or something?
Commissioner Smiley and Commissioner Macklemore, if any of those are the ones that you've abstained from, I'd encourage you to abstain from the vote on those three.
The only one that I'm involved with is Brian Company Services.
So that you can vote on this?
Well, I can vote on this.
Commissioner Smiley, abstain. If any of those three are the ones you filled the abstention forms out for and we submitted the conflict letter.
Of which company was it?
The second one, Crest Enterprises and Land Development.
Those three names under it.
On page number one.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
Thank you. Please proceed with the vote.
Okay. Do I have, I got a motion by Mr. Yeager, I got a second by Mr. Macklemore. Do I have any opposed? Do I have anything from the public? Do I have anything from the public? Got a motion by Mr. Yeager, I got a second by Mr. Macklemore. Do I have any opposed? Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Okay, the next step, Mr. Chairman, would be with regards to Jeffrey's HAP amendments. As you get on to page three, he's made various suggestions. We've discussed them. The commission's discussed raising the sixty-five thousand dollar single-family de-tax structure limit. He also offers a comment in their evaluation that they recommend raising that level. And he, and he offered additional comments with regards to other chapters and sections. If there's additional discussion amongst the commission, otherwise you'd be entertaining a vote after public discussion.
And this vote on the sixty-five extension, I think we've discussed that things have moved up since we initially put that sixty-five thousand in there. Is this gonna be for this one time, or, or we're actually amending our plan?
What we're requesting is the county's consideration of a motion to one-time, a one-time waiver of that requirement. When we were discussing the revision to the housing assistance plan, that would need to be addressed separately and would apply to future awards.
You know, I'm good with it. It's a, it's a grant from CDBG, and, and I, I, I'm, I'm good with it as long as they'll accept it and, and like the other board members.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll put it on.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have a second for this discussion?
I'll second.
For discussion, Mr. Smiley.
Yes, one question for the attorney. Now, does this concern, this vote, or this concern myself and Mr. Smiley?
Again, I think the best thing to do at this point is if Commissioner Smiley and Commissioner Macklemore would identify which one of the GC projects, identify them for the record, and then we will reference back to those. You abstain from those specific projects, for the record, will fill out the form eight, and then you can participate and abstain from those. So, if you can't identify which projects, Commissioner Smiley, Commissioner Macklemore, we've already done a conflict letter and provided to Mr. Winter.
Here's oh nine.
I got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
And second by me.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel, second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed?
Did you?
Come on now.
Before we go forward, Commissioner Smiley, on these, on page two and page three, if you can identify which one of those projects that you've already signed a conflict interest letter that we've submitted to Mr. Winter for the program.
You want us to do that?
State right now which one of those projects you're gonna abstain, abstain from. Which specific projects you're abstaining from.
Yeah, okay. Mine is with Brian Companies, GCO nine. GCO zero nine, because of family relation.
Abstain. Thank you.
Mine's with Florida Homes, GCO four, in-laws.
Those are the only two projects you both abstain from?
Yeah.
Okay, we have the conflict of interest, we have the form eights, we stated for the record. If the clerk in the minutes can reflect that they'll abstain from those, participation on those votes going forward, we can proceed with a, a global motion, and then we'll just move forward and make those exceptions.
Okay, now, we're gonna start this, a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel, and a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, now, Mr. Attorney, do that go five and oh?
Yes.
Five and oh, all but for those two projects, which are three and oh with two abstentions.
And this does apply to those, both of those projects. If, if I may, I would just recommend for your consideration that it not include a five oh vote, but rather a three oh, simply because both of the projects that were declared as potential conflicts of interest, they would be affected by this vote.
Those two projects are three oh with two abstentions.
So, I got, uh, motion carries three oh with two abstain.
Okay. I guess the next step we can talk about is the ship contributions. Mr. Winter had mentioned that we need to raise the level of the commitment from the county in the leveraged funds from the ship. I don't know, Jeffrey, do you wanna talk specifically about the, the funding?
Sure. Uh, it, the county commission has already committed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of ship funding towards this program, and that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was committed towards this CDBG project to obtain additional points, to make the county's application more competitive. Because you have specifically identified one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we would recommend formally approving up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover all of the expenses. It does not in any way affect the points that you've secured. You would still be held to a minimum one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for scoring purposes, to ensure that the application is still fundable. However, in order to complete these projects, it would require you to identify the additional ship leverage being contributed towards this program.
Chairman, the only thing I would say there is, these, these programs mirror each other, so to speak. They help people in need, and, and so I, I'm in favor of committing those funds.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. And, and, talking about Mr. Mike Daniel, do I have any opposed? Attorney.
If I can, I wanna identify the projects specifically that you're gonna raise the level for. Those are the GCO nine Nancy Williams, GCO one Dennis Anderson, GCO three Susan Moore, April Murray, GCO four Ida and Sammy Porter, Holly Cargill, which is GC twelve, I believe. Jeffrey, that's, that's six.
Uh, there are the six that are.
I'm sorry, the elevens, which is GC ten, that's the sixth project.
You've got those, those that were just submitted today, those six, in addition to, and maybe Brett would be the person to discuss this, there are other projects as well. Yeah, I, I did draft a memorandum this morning. I placed it in front of you. I'll just read it real quick. Please accept this recommendation for approval of ship rehabilitation assistance of up to forty thousand dollars in conjunction with fund, funding from the community development block grant program to the following. I listed three applicants, but there's six applicants. And two, two of you will need to abstain from these as well. Joanna and Rodney Levins, Susan Moore and April Moore, Sammy and Ida Porter, Dennis Anderson, Nancy Williams, and Holly Cargill.
Do you need a motion to that, Brett, also?
We'll need to get a motion and the abstention as well.
Okay, so, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. I'd be able to second.
Second.
Talking about Mr. Mike Daniel, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries three with two abstain.
Thank you.
All right. Jeffrey, I just wanted to offer a comment to the commissioners. He had provided me some of the contracts that they'd used in the past. We discussed a couple of additional security provisions for the county with regards to encumbering the properties going forward when these funds are allocated to these projects. And Jeffrey and I are exchanging dialogue right now. I'm gonna be making some additional revisions to those contracts and providing additional language to protect the county and its interest in these funds. But we're, it's ongoing, and we're working through that right now. Just wanted to notify you that. Don't need a motion to that effect.
With that being said, the next request we would put before the county commission for consideration would be a motion to waive the requirement for each contractor to satisfactorily complete one project through the CDBG housing rehab programs before receiving any additional contract awards.
So, you're gonna finish them one at a time?
Say again?
Is that what you, is that what you?
No, this would allow us to, to not have to wait for each contractor to complete one project. We could contract them all simultaneously.
I got you. So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel, second by Mr. Joanna. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? Mr. Attorney, do me and Mr. Yeager?
Let's have that standing abstention for the ones you've identified before. They apply to those two projects.
I think this specifically would only apply to Chairman Smiley, as Brian Co Services is only being awarded one project.
Correct. So, it'll be four with one abstention, if you agree.
Motion carries four with one abstain.
Okay. And the next matter we put before the commission for consideration would be a motion to waive the requirement to award contracts for housing units with bids greater than fifteen percent above or below our housing rehab specialist estimates.
I, I think they did all of those in one motion, originally.
All the amendments. I just asked.
Well, that, that your recommendations were.
That takes care of the fifteen percent, the sixty-five thousand, and the, um, three contracts per contractor. I believe that was it.
I believe that was it, but for clarification, did it also include the approval of our recommendation of award for the first scenario, meaning that Crest bids were accepted? It included the award, okay.
Actually, I know you all gave the exception to accept a late bid. If you can just clarify that you accept the first recommendations based on the late bid coming in, if you just do it for clarity on the record, it'd be helpful.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed?
This would be a three.
Motion carries three zero. Three zero.
All right. And there are just two other items we wanted to request. Number one, some direction on the maximum temporary relocation limits to be set. Again, you have fifteen thousand dollars set aside, you have thirteen applicants, seven of those are new construction, with the remaining six being rehabilitation projects. The maximum you set can be different for rehabs as opposed to your new constructions, but that's something we would request some direction on, and we can take that direction from the commission and make sure that we carry that out as we make payments.
Jeffrey, you've all obviously have done these before. Have you got a recommendation on amounts that it may take?
I would recommend twelve fifty, one thousand, two hundred and fifty for your demolition new construction projects. That's for a ninety-day term, that they would potentially be displaced, and for the rehab projects, perhaps seven hundred and fifty dollars to account for, in the event that it's necessary for them to relocate, some funding as well for the forty-five day period.
So moved for those numbers, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Yeager.
Uh, second question.
Sir.
Discussion. Our discussion. Some of these probably will not.
Correct.
Make it their homes, they can, they're working around it.
If they're rehabilitation projects, yes.
I know the reconstruction, there's no question there. That's, that's off the table, but probably some, maybe they may, and will that be taken into consideration here?
Absolutely. Really, for the rehab projects.
They take them all, and if we have any left, we can bring it back.
Correct. And, and the unencumbered funds could also be considered through a budget modification just to provide additional funds in your housing rehab demolition line item. As we already know, with all thirteen projects being awarded, the unencumbered funds really would serve no purpose staying in that line item.
This is on a reimbursement basis. That's how the, we don't just, just write a check for these funds, they have to bring us the receipts, and they're, they get reimbursed.
It's a government program. We have to sufficiently document down to every penny.
Motion by Mr. Yeager, a second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries three and oh with two abstain.
All right, and finally, if I may, there's one last item that we'd like to request the county, county commission's consideration, and that would be a motion to allow some flexibility as we have put together this recommendation of award based upon all of your requirements. However, we have not confirmed with each of the contractors that they would be willing to accept all of the bids as they're presented. In the event that one of the contractors may decide to withdraw a bid, for example, just for discussion's sake, if Brian Co Services were to withdraw their bid, as they are an out-of-town contractor, it may not be worthwhile for them to accept just a single project. In that case, we would request the county commission's authorization to move forward in conjunction with county staff to approve an award and execute contracts for the subsequent contractor. And, and that may involve a waiver of the three projects if there's insufficient pool of contractors remaining after a bid is withdrawn. It's an item we wanted to make sure we covered with you in the event that circumstance arises.
All right. Question?
Sir.
In the event? Always.
Correct.
Always it stays the same price or less. When you use that word, uh, give you some leeway or variance.
I understand, it's, it's a.
Highway Patrol, I ask him how much variance, he's, mm.
And, and it's not to, uh, it's not for any reasons that would jeopardize our integrity in any way, shape, or form. However, we're planning on sitting down and signing contracts tomorrow in order to make sure that we hit the ground running and we can get these projects done prior to February.
Cause you only got about a hundred and twenty day frame.
We don't have a timeframe to come back before you.
If, if you have to go to another contract, obviously, it's gonna be a higher price.
Absolutely, yes.
Not necessarily. What could happen is that one of your ones that has three may end up with four.
I got you.
And that, and that. And that would be the waiver, basically, that we're asking for.
And that's why we wanted to make sure to include that. But again, because of our timeframes, we're not gonna have the opportunity to come back before you if one of these is withdrawn, and it puts us in a situation where we're gonna have to make a decision on how to move forward.
Jeffrey, I trust you and all that kinda thing. Can you, can you provide each of the individual board members, if, if that does happen, at the end of the day, please provide us with.
Absolutely. I would be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion it.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries with two and, with two abstain, three oh, two abstains.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Enjoy your morning.
Thank you for a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Mr. Juan.
You're welcome. I would like to say, on, on their behalf and, and with the ship funds as well, we are able to do three additional projects over and above what we agreed to do, and, and we're gonna be a very good project when we do that.
Juan, I'd like to thank y'all, cause I know we went through a lot trying to get this to work out, so I thank everyone who worked on it.
Yes, a prevalent proposal for the stump hole re-vetment.
Um, that's, that's mine as well. We received a grant from TRIP, from DOT, to finish the original permitted footage at the stump, stump hole. Yeah, I believe it was one point two or one point four million dollars, and this is the proposal from the engineer to do the engineering services, preparing the bids, engineer to do the engineering services, preparing the bids, CEI, and everything involved with the remainder of that phase of the project.
I'll abstain from that vote, but I did want to ask one question. Come on, is that the last of the south end, or is that...
That's the last of the original permitted 1,550 feet.
So that's the last.
And then we did get another grant where we're going to try to permit some additional footage on the eggland side.
Chairman, I'll abstain from that vote.
I move.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Mike... Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries...
Commissioner, any public comment?
Do we have any public comment? Motion carries four and oh with one extension.
Did anybody make anything else for me? If not, I'm going to slip out and start working on contracts.
Bye-bye. Again, Dwan, I want to thank you too.
Yes, sir.
Brad, because we've been at each other for what, nearly a year? And I've been down there, and that was one of my priorities to help these people. So thank you, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing with regards to the proposed public speaking ordinance. In your packet, page 145, is the notice that was advertised on October 11. In addition to that, on the ball appears, there's a copy of the Senate Bill 50 that we've distributed in prior meetings for the public if they'd like to have a copy of it. If I can, I'd like to first read the preamble to the actual statute and what the legislature passed, and then I'll go into the actual ordinance, and then following that, if we can, have commission discussion, and then finally, public's comment before you consider it for approval. The committee substitute for Senate Bill 50, and I'm just going to... It reads as follows: An act relating to the public means creating statute 286 subsection 0114 defining the board or commission requiring that a member of the public be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard by a board or commission before it takes official action on a proposition, providing exceptions, establishing requirements for laws or policies adopted by the board or commission, and providing that compliance with the requirements of this section is deemed to have occurred under certain circumstances, providing that a current court has jurisdiction to issue an injunction under certain circumstances, and authorizing the court to assess reasonable attorney fees in actions filed against a board or commission, and providing that an action be taken by a board or commission which is found in violation of this section is not void, providing that the acts fulfill an important state interest and providing for an effective date. In front of each of you, if there's a packet I provide to each of you, it's tab number two, is a copy of the proposed ordinance. It is a short ordinance, and I'd like to, if I can, I'll review the actual ordinance language, and I'm going to give you the whereas clauses in addition to that. The ordinance reads as follows: An ordinance of Gulf County Florida entitled Public Participation at Board Meetings Providing for Repealer, Severability, Modifications that May Orise from Consideration at the Public Hearing and Providing for an Effective Date. Whereas the legislature of the state of Florida recently adopted Senate Bill 50 now codified as chapter 2013, 227 laws of Florida, and whereas Senate Bill 50 sets forth certain requirements for participation by the public as meetings of the Board of County Commissioners as well as other boards created by the Board of County Commissioners. And whereas a result of Senate Bill 50 now codified as 2013, 227 laws of Florida enacted by the legislature of the state of Florida under section 286, 0114, have directed this commission to provide a member of the public a reasonable opportunity to be heard by a board or commission in specified matters and issues as defined by the statute. And whereas the result of this enactment by the legislature of the state of Florida under Florida statute section 286, this Board of County Commissioners has deemed appropriate and necessary to memorialize past adopted policies pertaining to public participation at board meetings. Whereas pursuant to Florida statute 125,01, the county shall have the power to carry on county government, inclusive the power to adopt some rules which are not inconsistent with general or special law. Whereas pursuant to Florida statute 125, the county shall reserve the powers to adopt ordinances necessary for the exercise of its powers and perform acts which are in common interest of the people of Gulf County and exercise all powers and privileges not specifically prohibited by law, now therefore be ordained by the county commissioners of Gulf County. Section 1, Public Participation at Board Meetings reads as follows: In order to provide the general public an opportunity to address the Board of County Commissioners, and in compliance with Florida law, members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to address the Board of County Commissioners on any concern under the jurisdiction of the board and on any proposition prior to the board taking official action on such proposition. To assure a full and fair opportunity for all citizens to be heard, the following rule shall apply to all legislative, quasi-legislative, and quasi-judicial matters unless formal quasi-judicial procedures are instituted. A, public comment on any concern under jurisdiction of the board or any proposition to be considered by the board shall be heard following the commissioners and the staff have completed their discussion and comments on the issue and prior to the board taking an action on the concern or matter. Public comments shall also be heard on any proposition which the board is to take action which was either not on the agenda or distributed to the public prior to the commencement of the meeting. This public comment shall be limited to a proposition under consideration and shall be heard prior to the board taking an action on the proposition. Public comments shall be directed to the chairperson presiding over the meeting and not to the staff, audience, or individual commissioners. Prior to addressing the board, each person shall fill out a speaker's form provided at the door stating the speaker's name and address when applicable and prior notice afforded. All comments must be made from the podium after stating one's name and address. B, the individual members of the public addressing the board shall be allotted three minutes to make their statement, presentation, or present their request. Persons documented to be speaking on behalf of an organization shall be allotted five minutes, and one individual per organization shall be permitted to speak on behalf of the organization. If the subject matter requires investigation by county staff, the chairperson shall refer the matter to the county administrator for further review and future comment and recommendation. C, persons seeking speaking during public hearings and workshops of the board shall be limited to a time period set aside for public comment. The time period set forth in A and B above shall be observed during public hearings and workshops. The requirements set forth in subsections A and B above do not apply to the following: One, an official act that must be taken to deal with emergency situation affecting the public health, welfare, or safety. If compliance with the requirements would cause an unreasonable delay in the ability of the board or commission to act. Two, an official act involving no more than a ministerial act, including but not limited to approval of minutes and ceremonial proclamations. Three, a meeting that is exempt under statute 286. A meeting... Four, a meeting during which the Board of County Commissioners is acting in a formal quasi-judicial capacity, the rights of persons to be heard during a formal quasi-judicial hearing shall be provided by applicable law. Individuals who violate the rules of public participation shall be requested to leave the podium and return to their seat. The use of insulting, vulgar, or profane language directed at the board, any member thereof or members of the audience or staff should not be tolerated. Any such conduct may result in the request of the chairman and law enforcement officers being summoned to remove such individuals from the meeting. Section 2 is a repealer clause. Section 3 is severability. Section 4 is modification. Section 5 is an effective date, all required by the actual statute that's been enacted as of October 1 and signed by the governor this past July. I'd make some additional comments in italics based on some of the comments at the prior meeting, but I would offer it now to the Commission if you all would like to offer your general comments and discussion in the parliament, open it to public discussion.
I have any comments from the board?
Just clarify, Jeremy, I noticed that... I'm sorry, Mr. Novak, I noticed that you have, you know, parenthetical there, some various terms.
Sure.
And I know it's a difficult thing to determine which term everyone can understand because a lot of these terms are subjective.
Commissioner, would you like me to read those and then just offer them to the Commission? At your last meeting, there was discussion with regards to the terms used. It currently reads the use of insulting, vulgar, or profane language. As you see in front of you, I've provided you some alternative comments or words. Use of insulting, abusive, offensive, rude, insolent, discourteous, or slighting in addition to vulgar or profane language. The pleasure of the Commission, and if you all would give me some direction as to what words you find appropriate.
I just want to be certain that we choose a word that we and the public all understand, and we may be insulted by something that the public has to come up and address us with. I think it's our job to be insulted to a certain extent. I think abusive is probably... I think we can all agree that we should not be abused, or the public shouldn't be abused. So I just want to be certain we get a word in there that is not too vague.
Have you got a preference, Commissioner, on which ones you'd like to include?
Or exclude?
Or the ones you want to exclude?
I think insulting is too broad. I think abusive is... I like abusive better. It again is subjective, but a little bit more flair. I think vulgar and profane is very clear. My other issue with this same section is that this covers language directed at the board, any member thereof, or at members of the audience or staff. And I think that sometimes we have folks who come to this podium and use our podium to attack members of the community that are not here. They are not in the audience. So I would suggest that we add private citizens because if they're not here, they should still have that same protection.
I have my comment.
Yes, sir.
I like what our attorney drafted up here. I think he's done a very good job with it. I have no issue with it.
Just, if I can, Commissioner, just so the Commission knows, the public knows, and folks that watch this meeting after today, it'll be the chairman, and it is, I mean, it's subjective, but it'll be the chairman's interpretation in the future when folks come to the podium or dialogue amongst the Commission during these meetings, and we're going to put that responsibility in the chairman's hands. So when and if it does come up in the future, as county law, it'll be the chairman's responsibility.
Right. If you want to take out insulting, I don't have any issue with that. Others?
Novak, do we need a motion for that? Is this the appropriate...
I would say, yeah, as you go through, make your comments, make your amendments, put them to a motion. I'll make those changes real forward if there's discussion.
I will make the motion to remove insulting.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager, do I have any opposed?
Yes.
Got one opposed, motion carries four and oh.
And I would like to make the motion to include the word abusive. Mr. Novak, my understanding is these parentheticals are just suggestions. You're not going to use them all. Okay, so I would like to make the motion to substitute in the word abusive.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed?
Yes.
Got one opposed, motion carries four and oh.
I would also like to make a motion to include private citizens in the list of who the profane, vulgar, and abusive language should not be directed at.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
I'm sorry, was it the public or was it private citizens?
Either way, we don't include people who are in the public who are not in the meeting.
I mean, just general public to cover.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Yeager, do I have any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries three with two opposed. Opposed, chair opposed. Motion carries three, two. Who got mixed?
Just any other additional comments? There was a typo under subsection D that set forth requirements in subsection A and B, originally you referenced B. A has been included. Other than that, it's the same document that's been presented to you five and a half weeks ago, and it is here today before you. So if there's any other additional comment, if there isn't, I'd encourage, open it up to the public for comments.
Do I have any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
This is in regard to what we need to say?
No, no, he's wanting to speak on something. Okay. Do I have any comments from the public on this matter that we're talking about right now?
You would entertain a motion with those amendments. I'll include them.
Got a motion from the board.
I move.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries five and oh. Mix on the...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Richardson provides you a memorandum with regards to our most recent planning development review board. In front of you, you have the most updated report from Mr. Richardson as to the variances, minor subdivision application. The public meeting was yesterday morning. I'd like to direct your attention to, first, the number one, which was the variance request of Thomas and Paula Bush. It was the recommendation that the matter be tabled for the variance request, which passed by the quorum that was present, was unanimous to table the matter. Is there any questions or discussion with regards to one? Number two is a preliminary plat approval for a minor subdivision. Tyler W. Smith, the partial ID 06268025R and 06268022R on Cape San Jose. Location is in section seven, township nine, south, range eleven west, Gulf County, 2.22 acres for a minor subdivision of a six-unit development with no road infrastructure. There is a recommendation in a vote following the public comment of three oh to recommend the approval of the preliminary plat, with final to establish a dedicated access zone that is documented in both text and graphic formats. I don't know, Dave, you have any additional comment on the subdivision? If you do, and I don't know if there's anybody here on behalf of the applicant if you'd like to ask them if they have any comment as well.
I have any comments from the public. Comments from the public.
Okay. Now, discussion amongst the Commission and...
Just a little discussion. This is in my district, and I think we've... And I don't know how familiar PDRB was with the history of the subdivision, subdivision ordinance, that type thing. And Don, you may can shed a little bit of light on it, but one of the things that we required of anything, I think over three parcels, we required some road improvements because, guys, at the end of the day, it's going to come back to this board. And it's in my district, and I know there's special circumstances sometimes, and I don't know... I'm not familiar with all that deal, but Don, have you got any comment on this particular one? I'm not familiar with it.
Is anyone in the audience that's here of anyone referenced to this? The husband. She had a little light on.
I did. I came to the panel board meeting yesterday, yesterday night, and then I conversed with David Richardson, who said, man, after the meeting. And my comment to you would be, although I see this as something that the ordinance probably would allow, I would recommend that you take a look at the ordinance, and I said it earlier, ours, to alleviate the problem in the future because what is going to happen in the future? There's going to be some very nice houses built on this road, and the owners of those very nice houses will be back on that podium saying, I pay a lot of taxes, you need to pave my road. Now, as I do understand, the roadway and two of the subdivisions made up are a bunch of poles, of flag lots. The pole portion of the flag lot is not my free ride, and you put four or five of those together, you've got a wide interest into a subdivision, and each one has a map up with to ride on. But we all know, everybody will ride the same tracks in or the same tracks out. So my only comment is, I think this goes by your ordinance. It's something you probably should look at in the future because they will be back at some point in time to dedicate this property. It is private property, and they would like to dedicate it to you in order for you to pave the road.
Okay.
We don't have to.
Yeah. Jack, you got any further comments? That gives me a little bit more understanding.
We were earlier last month, you missed this meeting when we were here prior to, and so you weren't pretty to the information, but earlier we had a seven-and-a-half-foot flag pole portion of the flag poles just didn't work out. It's coming out flat. It went... That's the only check. I didn't say anything about it. We're going to catch it on the final, and so now we have it revised as a final flat basically for preliminary plat submission. So now we have a nine-foot flag pole portion of the flag lots, a 25-foot driveway easement across the front. We've included all the pedestrian easements, and what we're doing is we have outlined, and I'll come up here and show you.
Okay.
I'll show everyone. Basically, our flag poles are here. We're going to come here and stir it shut down so that...
Okay.
...the representation and the text representation that Mr. Novak talked about was...
Not much.
That here is a stair step after the access and the graphic and the text. So that representation will be done graphically and text, and in the text form. And there is already a road there, and I've got pictures of that here, too. So, I mean, just like you said, we all know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
There's a lime rock road there now, you know, and I've got pictures here all the way up and down.
And a lot of times, especially on the Cape, people like lime rock. They want to leave it as lime rock. They don't come back to the county and ask...
Yes, sir. There's an environmental issue with the path to travel and the travel paths of all the habitat and that sort of thing.
Based on that and the three oh those by the PDRB, I'm good with it. I'll put it in form of motion. I move.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second is motion.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? Motion carries five and oh.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, the third item heard was a variance request from Mr. John Kratwine with partial ID 04038050R in St. Joe Beach. It's located in section five, township seven, south, range eleven west, Gulf County. It was with regards to encroachments into the setbacks. There was public discussion, the property owners... Um, there was public discussion, uh, the property owners and their representative who were in attendance also offered public comment. Um, there was a discussion, and then ultimately a recommendation by the PRB, three oh to deny the two variances that would allow a rear setback encroachment. Uh, I believe that's not actually, it was- I believe my notes, uh, reflect it was a one, four, and two opposed, um, and it was denied the two variance requests, which will allow a, a rear setback encroachment um, into both Alabama and the side lot, uh, sideline of the property. Um, I, I know the representative is here on behalf of the variant, variance application, on Mrs. Zimmerman, and I don't know if she wanted to all come up and offer some comments to you as well.
Good morning, I'm Diane Zimmerman, I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Ms. Troutwine. Um, this, uh, variance application was applied for based on some information that Mr. and Ms. Troutwine obtained in a telephone call in planning and zoning. Um, the lot in question is at sixty-six seventy-seven Alabama Avenue, it's on the corner of Selma in Alabama. The lot size is seventy-five by one sixty-nine. The Troutwines purchased the lot in two thousand and ten, since that time, they have had on the property two, um, campers, two travel trailers, and a, a large boat. This is a particularly wooded lot, a lot of natural vegetation. Um, when they purchased the lot, their goal was to leave as much of that vegetation as possible on the lot. Um, the front setback on both of their corner, on both of, both sides that front, the, the road, is twenty feet from their property line. At question is what they were told by planning and zoning. Um, a little bit of history, Mr. and Ms. Troutwine came to see me at Seal Homes Center sometime last year. At that time, I in fact told them that the Gulf County setbacks were twenty feet from the property line on both roads. Um, with that information, we talked about the size of the home based on the location they wanted to place the property. Well, after they met with me, they actually went to several other dealerships and several other people, and ultimately they contacted Planning and Zoning office direct. Um, in the phone conversation with Planning and Zoning, they were the person on the telephone, and this is, they testified to this yesterday, they had to go back to, and, they live in Jordan, had to leave. Um, testimony from Mr. and Ms. Troutwine were that the person on the phone said that the front setback, they actually pulled up their parcel on the computer, saw both the campers and saw the lot in question, and were told that it was twenty feet from the pavement, rather than twenty feet from the property line. That, that's even despite what I, what I had told them.
Hold it a minute, who do you represent?
Um, I am representing the Troutwines.
Oh, what company you work with?
Okay, I work with Seal's Home Center.
Seal's Home Center, now we got you, okay, I know where I'm going now.
Yes, sir. Okay, so, they were told by, by me that it was twenty feet from the property line. They then ca- were told by Planning and Zoning it was twenty feet from the pavement. They came back and they said, we've been told that the maximum size house that we can put facing it in this direction is, um, sixty-five feet long. So they then, with that in mind, probably, um, not knowing where they, who they had spoken with, not remembering the size of the lot, um, we then, they then purchased the home. So what we are asking for, based on that information that they obtained from Planning and Zoning, is, um, eleven and a half, eleven point eight foot, uh, an eight point eight encroachment on that front twenty-foot setback. Um, that way they can install the home that they actually, um, purchased to put on there. Um, some, um, the, the, um, the notice was given to all the neighbors, none of the neighbors objected, other than the person in the back, and we can address that objection. Um, the, we actually have received letters, um, from the neigh- four people in the neighborhood with no objection to the, the front encroachment. Um, and we also, um, in fact, Mr. Tilley, the neighbor fr- who is directly across from him, from them, came to the, uh, meeting and suppo- excuse me, supported the Troutwines to be able to use their property as they saw fit, and had no objection to the, the front, to two front setbacks of twenty feet. So we're asking the board to approve a, a, a front encroachment of eight point eight feet on the front, um, on the front-
I hear you, comments from the board?
Yes, if, if, Ms. Commissioner, if I can offer some comment to, to help you with this, um, there's two encroachments. Um, Mrs. Zimmerman accurately, uh, reflected that. The one objection that we noted on the record yesterday was from, uh, the neighboring property owner on block ten lot three, which is Richard Smith. Uh, the, he is the one that objected, he is the one that the encroachment comes into the setback, he's the adjoining property owner. Um, there has been, um, submitted into the record, uh, letters from the neighboring properties who are not adjacent property owners. So, so they welcomed them to the community and said they had no objection to it. But, again, there's two encroachments, there's one on the street, and there's one on the side with, with regards to Mr. Smith.
We will, we will, um, remove that back encroachment, we'll address Mr. Smith.
And, and, and as you all understand, and I'll, if you don't have this, I'll pass this up to you all so you can see it. Mrs. Zimmerman is referencing, they moved the actual home out of the encroachment on Mr. Smith, the way they moved it is further into the setback requirement on the other side of the property. As you pass that down, she's referencing eight point eight feet along Alabama, that would presumably make it nine point eight feet, is that correct?
Um, and originally, eight point eight would, um, make that accurate, actually, originally was seven point-
Seven point eight, okay.
Seven point eight, so eight point eight would, would take into account the, the encroachment on the backs.
Okay.
Um, you know, and at the meeting, it was suggested that I, we find some reason, um, within, um, LDR to, to modify this, and, and our, our request for variances based on number three, special conditions and circumstances that do not result in the action from the applicant. Well, Mr. and Ms. Troutwine, they based their purchase on information they actually received from Planning and Zoning. And while, um, they were initially given correct information, they then later obtained incorrect information from the people who are actually supposed to provide accurate information, which are employees.
Who did they speak to?
Yeah, who have these, they people?
Well, there's never been-
I have trouble with they people.
There's never been, um, there's never been a denial that that in fact could have happened. In fact, conversations that I have had with, with, uh, Planning and Zoning is that it's, you know, it could have happened. Yesterday at the meeting, it was, um, Mr. Richardson said it could have happened, someone could have ca- called up and been given, um, twenty feet from the, the right of way, or twenty feet from the pavement, that that could have happened, um, and, um, so there's-
You go ahead.
You know, and I don't know what happened, but Mr. and Ms. Troutwine did, did their due diligence. They actually contacted the people who, who are supposed to be able to give them the accurate information, and they knew that the issue was twenty feet from the property line or twenty feet from the pavement, because they had been told it was twenty feet from the property line. And there, they were told by Planning and Zoning on the phone that it was twenty feet from the pavement, which is a totally different situation than what it is.
Pavement or the center line of the pavement?
They were told pavement, that's, that's what their argument was.
Well, that can vary, from the edge of the pavement then. All right, how, let me ask you this, how long is Seal? Seal been busy since nineteen fifty-five?
Fifty-seven, yes.
Fifty-seven, that's close enough, couple of years don't matter that far back. And we've had continually, this county has had issues with Seal's.
Well, I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna take, um, I'm just agree with that one.
Well, you, you have that off, you know, that's your prerogative.
Yes, sir.
But, the bottom line is, we have a building department, did we get survey? I don't think everything was followed here, from what I can see, but is the trailer, where was your site planned?
The, the site plan was provided.
I looked at this, but I looked at another one, and it don't compare to-
Well, and, and addition, what, what initially should have happened, or, or, if, what happened is the house was, was four feet too long, that was-
Uh-huh.
Okay, um, in addition to the, the, the confusion as far as where the actual twenty foot, twenty foot starts, whether it's at the center of the road, the property, or the, the pavement, um, the house, um, that the factory built was four feet longer. So in reality, we would have had a four-foot encroachment based on the figures that they, based on the house that they, they initially purchased.
Were they told Gulf County has, uh, uh, policies or ordinances or building code and ma'am, this-
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
You don't sell a trailer to make a sale, or sell these people, this trailer's four feet too long, it will not go and meet all our building codes.
No, sir, and Mr. and Mr. Troutwine did admit, when he first came to see me, he was told twenty feet from the property line. Because, yes, sir, we have had this issue about three years ago with someone who, who same, and, and another gentleman who, very astute, very educated. When someone comes to you and they say, okay, I have contacted Planning and Zoning and told, here's how big I can have my house for this lot. Initially, you don't, you don't question that. In this particular situation, they actually came to us, and we told them what they were, and then they decided that, that we either, A, didn't know what we, we were talking about, or they wanted to do something different, so then they actually contacted Planning and Zoning themselves, and-
I-
Mr. and Ms. Troutwine.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. and Ms. Troutwine contacted Planning and Zoning themselves after being told, and they were told by Planning and Zoning it was twenty feet from the pavement. And how that happened, I'm not sure, but that's how we got here today. So when they came back to, to purchase the home, they, their conversation was, we've contacted Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning says, we can have a house out here sixty feet facing Alabama, and, um, and, and so they ordered the house.
Ma'am, I wanna ask you a question, 'cause I was in the process of trying to purchase a mobile home myself. And the mobile home that I want to purchase, they told me that I could not put it where I want to put it. But a seller told me to go and check to make sure before I go through all this, to make sure that mobile home could be put in that location. And come to find out that it, it could not be put there. So now you being the seller, and you selling mobile homes in Gulf County, you know these rules. And you let them bought this trailer without doing a second, I mean, without going back and checking it again?
Yes, yeah, you're right, yes, sir, because they had told me, they had contacted Planning and Zoning.
Right now I wanna leave them out of this situ- I'm talking about you, because you know, if you sell them a trailer and they don't have nowhere to put it, put it.
You might have to go to the parking lot.
Well, no, sir, no, sir, and that's, that's, that's the real dilemma in this, this particular lot, because they were, they were also told that the, the variance is, is often granted when you have two twenty-foot setbacks. You know, so, so you've got two things going on here, you've got them being told that, first of all, it's twenty foot from the, from the pavement, not from the property line, and they are told that, that the tw- two twenty-foot variances oftentimes, one side is, their, a variance is granted. So, so that's what they were, that's what they were relying on.
Mr. Chairman, it just, I, I know Mrs. Zimmerman's giving you her account of yesterday's hearing, we had the planning board members, the planner and myself, um, considerable public input. Just a couple of points, um, we, I actually provided each of you a copy of the LDR in front of you for your reference. Um, section two point oh five oh seven, which defines the purposes of granting variances. I actually introduced that and read it to the planning board yesterday, so that they would base their decisions on these variances strictly in your land development regulations. Um, Mrs. Zimmerman's here today, she mentioned again that you're aware that it is twenty feet from the property line.
Yes, sir, I'm aware.
And yesterday you said that in the testimony as well, that you knew that, but somebody else in your office, I guess, was told in the Troutwines' call to verify with the county, but Seal's Home Center knew it was twenty feet from the home, and-
About it, yes, sir, yeah.
You also indicated yesterday that, I think there's three or four projects you've done in St. Joe Beach in the last year or two that were successfully put in based on those twenty-foot setbacks from the, from the property line, so-
One of them actually had a variance granted, yes, sir.
The planning board also noted in the questioning amongst the members of the planning board that the, there was the own homeowner and there was the contractor. The homeowner put the burden on the contractor to verify these, and if the site plan was inaccurate, if the phone calls ultimately comes to the contractor to verify these before the homes come out and put on this, this property. Um, they did go through all these, there was an acknowledgement by the contractor, um, that they were aware of the setbacks in Gulf County on these roads. Um, and who they called, or who the Troutwines, um, they had an opportunity to speak, um, and it was ultimately recommended one to two to deny both setback requirements. Um, and again, I, I direct your attention to subsection thirty-four, and then also notably, if you can, just read the second page on thirty-six, which is, the planning and development review board shall make a finding that the requirements regarding hardship relief have been met by the applicant for a variance, that the reasons set forth in the application justify the granting of the variance, and that the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the prop- the land, building, or structure. Um, and then subsection thirty-seven, it references that making finding that the granting of variance will be in harm of the general purpose and intent of these regulations, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. You have comment from adjacent property owner of the setback coming onto his property. You also have the planning board making comments and referencing yesterday that this is not in harmony with the, um, setback requirements in, uh, along Alabama Avenue.
Do I have any further comments from the board?
I, I just wanna clarify that the planning board did vote to recommend denying both variances.
It was a vote, one vote for granting and two votes to not grant.
And we're just asking for variance on Alabama.
And, and the, clearly, the house has, has already been placed.
Yes.
You're going to have to move the house if the variance was granted, well, either way, you're gonna have to move the house.
Yeah, the question is whether we have to move the house twelve inches forward, or, or, or get the surveyor to re-survey the back setback, which he's in saying is encroaching, encroaching it, or whether we have to turn it ninety degrees.
And your position is you will move the house so that the back setback is not breached for the side of Mr. Smith's property?
Yes.
And, Mr. Novak, what would that result in for the front setback if that was done?
Eight, eight point eight encroachment.
It takes a foot off of Mr. Mr. Smith's property line and moves it towards Alabama Avenue. And the applicant, um, and Mrs. Zimmerman amended their request for the variance at the hearing at that time, after they were denied the foot on Mr. Smith's side. They sought a compromise to try to move it a foot further into the setback.
I, I personally am not comfortable at this time going against what the PRB has recommended. Um, in this situation, I have spoken with some of the neighboring property owners, and, um, I know Mr. Smith submitted, uh, written concerns, that there are other folks in the community who may not express their concerns, but at this point, I'm not comfortable going against the recommendations of the PRB.
Put that in form of the motion.
Um, I, I'll make the motion to deny the variances.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Mike, Mike Moore, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion fail.
Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, the fourth item on your planning board is with regards to another variance request from Douglas and Barbara Cooksey. If you recall, this is an, a variance that's been on your, uh, prior meetings. Um, there was a, a appearance by Mr. Cooksey with regards to the, um, encroachments on the variance that have been granted. Um, it was a discussion yesterday in the public comment section, uh, the planning board actually voted, uh, three oh to deny the variance that would allow an additional three and a, uh, feet, six inches into the roadside back on Atlantic Street. Following the meeting, I was contacted by an attorney that, uh, represents Mr. Cooksey, um, there's been some public records requests. Could be my recommendation, if you would, to simply table the matter before you take action, based on my discussion with the attorney, to give him the ample opportunity so he can go back and review, uh, the prior PDRB meetings, and he can come, uh, either attend the November planning board meeting, or at that time, we'll move forward and ask for a final, uh, recommendation from you all. I'm ready to type.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Moore, second by Ms. Bryant, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
So I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Cover on that, Mr. Chairman, if I may. We don't stick to what we got, we're by our doable, we're in department, we don't need code enforcement, and, uh, I'm sorry, uh, that, uh, Mrs. Zimmerman might disagree, but, but Seal's supposed to know, all these know, when you go into these counties, that you first go to your building departments and you make sure that everything's in order, and I think they, they wanna go ahead and move it in, and that's tired, I'm tired of just patting them on the back of the hand, we got to get their attention.
Mr. Chairman, my first item is information for the board. Thursday, noon time Thursday, we have our next planning board meeting, I'm sorry, enterprise zone board meeting. Uh, very important issue at hand is, which, we're owning three additional square miles of enterprise zone to Gulf County to the mouth. Uh, we've already had meetings, we've already, uh, taken input from people that's concerned about where the enterprise zone. We've had Scott and G.I.S. to work the map up, uh, we're getting close, that doesn't mean we can't change, but we're getting close and put a board to take a look at at noon time on Thursday, to say, it's one of our core meetings, helped us all meetings a year, and this worked out so we can have it. We had a special meeting in the week's four hours to deal with enterprise zone route. But very important, anyone considered, uh, would like to see consideration, uh, additions of enterprise zone in certain areas of the county and be at the meeting, and, and, and we'll have other meetings too for, for additional input. Noon time Thursday, in the conference room here- Noon time Thursday, in the conference room here inside this board.
Have you contacted the EDA about being there at that meeting? And I know that's one of the things that they're going to take over, our commitment to them.
They was at our last meeting the week before last. He intends to be at the meeting this week.
Uh, Chair. Mr. Butler, clarify me on this. We can shift. We have some partial of land, and I think, just in for the record here, and the people. If we've got a partial of land that we know probably won't be developed, we can, we can move this around. It's not set in stone. Is that correct?
Again, we've already done some of that. Scott thinks we'll be working on-
Yeah, I got this morning.
Some of the park lands and some other properties, government-owned properties and properties we know, condom areas that's not going to be building, we'll have taken that back.
Good.
We have the real authors, acres, and put those somewhere else.
That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, next item, uh, give your handout. This is a bid qualification sheet for bid twelve thirteen dollars twenty. This is a video recording and broadcasting, BCC meetings. And what we can tell, we get to advertise, um, a request for qualifications, RFQ.
RFQ.
And the predominant part of what we know is RFQ. And in the RFQ, we ask for one to score which was, bid, what the bid would be. So this is not the typical RFQ where we ask for proposals, but we do ask for a, a wait. And we receive three. We receive, um, qualification from Ken Murphy. He's currently doing your video recording. Also with from Troy White, um, Katie Dogg's video, and Nichols Broadcasting. Um, Mr. Murphy, he submitted the bid, the bid portion of his qualifications sheet, which is the same as it's been the last several years. Um, at sixteen two, the low bid with Nichols Broadcasting, fourteen four, which is four year. And we're talking from low bid to high bid. Uh, Justin Trump had to, he'd been the high bid. He kept the same bid, hundred fifty dollars a month. And so, the board recalls, last year we dealt with Mr. Murphy. He goes out and revises equipment for we own, two locations here in South North County. He, he bought the equipment, probably a couple of thousand dollars, probably, I don't know where he did this, but, uh, his equipment he put in place. And, um, if he, if he did business, someone else had to replicate what he's got there. But, last year, we, we're talking about a hundred fifty dollars a month, low bid to high bid. There is no way in the world I could say that Ken Murphy's not qualified to record these meetings. So he certainly, he needs the RFQ part or what else for. So they're down to a hundred fifty dollars a month. So, if I had a recommendation to you, I recommend you not change horses. You stay where you are. And stay with Mr. Murphy. Lowering is a hundred fifty dollars a month more than low bid.
Mr. Butler, my next question. These other guys have the equipment, uh, get their equipment?
Low bid has, um, submitted information to us, but he also, he submitted to us what he knows and what knowledge he would have to do with current vendors, current contractors, and Ken Murphy, uh, his equipment, um, some shape or fashion. So, um, could it be done in this low one, Troy? Could it be done? Does he have the equipment? I'm sure he does or can't get the equipment. I think any reason, it would be safe to say they can get the equipment. Uh, the low bid does not have the equipment. I think you'd have to buy, uh, Mr. Murphy or get his own equipment, um, to place in the, uh, in the equipment rooms.
Do I have any comments from the board?
I, I think Mr. Murphy has done a good job for the board. And I know if we stay with him, we, we don't risk any, any downtime that we may have if, as Butler said, if we change horses. I do think he does a good job for the board.
You want to put that in form of the motion, Mr. Butler?
I'll, I'll make the motion to stay with Mr. Murphy.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant and second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, she asked for public comment.
Do I have any, out of from the public?
I think low bids, you still say low bids, you're spending our taxpayers' money. Man, I don't, and that's not the way the bid system works, right? I mean, we're talking all these contractors out here doing these things. And they're bidding these little bids-
Name and address.
To make sure you get all of the information you should need. Let's stay with just somebody higher. You're taking our tax money out of our pocket.
I, I, I think at the end of the day, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Can we get your name?
My name's Leonard Burrows.
Say that again, sir.
Leonard Burrows.
Leonard Burrows.
Thinking the end of the-
We should be legal and stay with the low bidders. And all these people out here bidding for their careers and stuff. I mean, those people don't have money thrown out of pockets just trying to bid for jobs. Unfortunately, that doesn't work. I can't understand. And I shouldn't really be speaking, but in my opinion, why are you throwing out these other people?
Now, you have the right to speak. You, 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 when you say you shouldn't be speaking, you have the right to speak. I think at the end of the day, what we did was put a qualifications package out there. And so that, that takes into consideration, you know, what you've got now versus what you may have in, in the future. And it's a very small amount, you know, it's a very small amount. So I, I, I stick by, you know, what we've done.
It would help the commission at all, um, in regards to Mr. Burrows' comments, which are, and Mr. Butler. Going back historically over two years, this process has been ongoing. It was originally with the TDC. This commission looked at putting in the TDC, having the TDC expend the sums and then taking it in-house and administering this. They did projections on costs. At that time, they tabled the issue and then did a temporary contract with Mr. Murphy. At that time, Mr. Murphy went out and expended the sums that the county otherwise would have had to spend. Um, and it was a savings to the county, passed to the county by not having to acquire that equipment. We're here again, the contract expired on October one. You all extended it for an additional month to fully explore that and let the staff make those recommendations. At the end of the day, that hundred and fifty dollars per month, in comparison to the actual investment in, in hardware and equipment in three different locations, in one way or another, would possibly come back to the county. And that needs to be taken into your consideration as well.
And I, I think that we've seen that the, the low bid isn't always the best bid for the job at that time. And that's no reflection on these three contractors, I think. Uh, I'm sure they're all very good contractors, but we have to look at other issues other than just the low bid. They're very close in bid.
I had a motion on the floor by Ms. Bryant.
And I have a second.
I have a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any further comments from the pollings? Do I have any opposed?
That's all I have.
Uh, stop.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. Um, first, after, um, after packets were made, uh, last week, I received a letter from the Leewahichka Warrior Football League. They are asking and requesting that the board, um, allow a waiver of the rental fee and to allow them to, um, uh, use the building on November the twenty-second for a banquet, for their end-of-year banquet, and to waive the fee.
Is it for a youth organization in Leewah?
Uh, the Leewahichka Warrior Football League.
I, I don't have any-
I think we did that last year.
I think we did, yes, sir.
I, I motion to move forward with-
Got a motion by Mr. Michael, Michael Moore?
I'll second for discussion. And I think at the end of the day, instead of each one of the requests coming in, if there's, it's, if, if it's a youth group or a not-for-profit, you know, um, I think at the end of the day, we're gonna, we're gonna approve those uses, you know. When you've got a wedding or something, sure, let's, let's charge them and, and, and that's, but when it's a not-for-profit or a youth organization-
The only issue here is we have to make sure we're sure that it's available-
Yes, sir.
You know, with the dates and all.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Opposed, motion carries.
Um, my next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, need to see if the board will entertain a budget hearing on November the twelfth at five oh one for supplemental budget, um, issues.
It's simply, um, as our end-of-year cleanup, unanticipated, um, cash carry forward, those type things that affect your revenue sources that are already budgeted. If there's any change to those numbers, we have to clean them up at the, um, end of the year. And some of those do require, uh, supplemental budget hearings. So you did one last year on November twenty-sixth. It's your large year-end cleanup.
Sure. Could we do that on the Monday prior too? I think we've got a board meeting that morning. And then I think some of us have to go to, uh, uh, fact conference-
That's fine.
That's going to include, uh, uh, some of the required ethics.
Monday is fine.
Will it be fine? Is that fine with the rest of the board?
It does have to be at five oh one, though.
I'll be on the eleventh. I thought we were through with budget here. Wait a minute, is that, uh, is that, uh-
Wednesday, Monday's a holiday.
Yeah.
Veterans Day, so y'all all, okay. Uh, anybody else come up with a-
If you wanted, since you're not doing it on the day of a regular board meeting, we could bump it to the following week. If y'all wanted to, you don't have a regular scheduled meeting that week. I was just trying to time it with that, but if you would like to do it the following week.
Eight over there.
Y'all like-
That next Monday would be fine?
Yes, that would be the eighteenth.
I'm going to be hot, more.
Do we need to vote for that? Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, two things. Um, one, I've got a resignation letter here from, uh, our Animal Control Officer Roland Jones. He is, he is resigning and wanting to join the draw-up program. So I have to get a vote from you guys to, uh, for an acknowledgement to allow him to ju-
He's fixing to leave, is he?
He, he, five years from now.
Okay. We got five years figured out. All right.
So.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Uh, one other thing. I've got a, uh, ship recipient, uh, to, uh, Ms., Mr. and Ms. Benjamin and Hazel Nunnery. Uh, try, this is ship-only funds that will, uh, be funding this project. Trying to get it started as soon as possible. They've got some family health issues. Um, ask for your approval, uh, rehabilitation project up to forty thousand dollars.
Tell me, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Michael Moore.
Second. I'll second that.
By Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Go.
Enough, Mr. Chairman.
David?
Yes, sir. Um, um, PDRB, um, having a special meeting on the eleventh to address a language issue, uh, language change. And, um, I need to confirm where the board's going to meet on the twelfth or not.
Of course, I know the twelfth we're going, we're going to be on. The only time that I've ever known us canceling a meeting in November is around Thanksgiving.
Just want to make sure. And, uh, second item is, I'm going to be short and member on the PDRB. And, um, um, Mr. James Christie's going to be resigning. And, um, for the board to start considering, uh, uh, we're struggling that long sometimes. So.
May I comment on this?
Sir.
I like to comment and, and thank Mr. Christie for serving his time with us. That, I mean, it's so hard to get volunteers, you know, to sit on those boards and, and listen to this that we have to go through all the time, you know. But I would like to ask Mr. Christie, maybe he may have some recommendation as to who would replace him. So that may help the board.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the packet you have in front, you have referenced, uh, I'd like to direct your attention to number one. Uh, it is the final lease agreement, uh, per the discussion two weeks ago. Uh, the lease agreement has been finalized in terms of what we have identified on the first floor of the Leewah Courthouse. Uh, most notable on the first page of the lease agreement, if I can direct your attention under the, uh, first section, uh, it references four thousand six hundred fifty-seven square feet comprising of the original first floor historic Gulf County Courthouse. Um, there's two hundred and seventy square feet in the foyer of the common area. And the old extension office are both excluded from this lease. Uh, other than that, the North Florida Child Development will occupy those other areas of the first floor. It is approximately about two thousand more square feet of usable space for North Florida Child Development. The terms I mentioned to you, uh, last meeting, uh, most notable is a ten-year term with one-year renewals. Uh, I've added additional language with regards to written confirmation between the parties prior to the anniversary each year on that lease. Um, and also, the, I just want to preference again, the language in it was in it the last time, but I want to read it for the commission and the public. The tenant shall be responsible for all utilities, operational expenses, upkeep and maintenance of the courthouse facility on a monthly basis. The areas occupied by the tenant shall be its sole financial obligation and requirement of this contract. For upkeep, repairs and maintenance, the utilities will be reported to the county comptroller's office for the tenant for proof of payment in the county records within fifteen days of the receipt. Um, this is the finalized, uh, lease I offered to you all. Um, we've moved forward. I've provided North Florida Child Development. Um, and upon receipt of a signed, uh, two original signed, I provide them to the chairman for counter signatures as well.
Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, I'll, I'll second that. And in the discussion, I'll, I'll say this is a win-win for Gulf County. It takes a burden off the taxpayer to maintain that building, which was pretty extensive. And, and so it's a win for North Florida with getting a one dollar, a dollar a year lease and maintaining the building. So, yeah, I'm in full support.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore. Got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have anyone from the public? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
If I can direct your attention to number three in your packet, uh, the beach driving fee amendment ordinance, as you all recall, you had changed the fees, um, I believe it was the end of August, or it was the end of August, that you changed the fee structure. Um, we prepared an ordinance and, and advertisement. Number three is the actual advertisement that will be running in the star this Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Uh, that is the notice there. Uh, the public hearing on the fee change on beach driving will be held on Tuesday, November twelfth at nine AM before this commission. Um, and you've already authorized to go forward. Again, this is for the public's information. This is available in the clerk's office for inspection on that ordinance as well. The page behind that, uh, if I can, uh, the sheriff, um, several of the constitutional officers, Mr. Butler, myself, met, uh, recently with regards to the beach driving fee and implementation of the new fee structure. One of the discussions that came up is Ms. Jenkins is going ahead and ordering new stickers. TDC at its most recent meeting came up with some new designs. We included that in the packet so you all can see what was the recommendation of the TDC council and Ms. Jenkins to you all. With your permission, we'll move forward and give Ms. Jenkins the ability to go out and start purchasing new tags that are consistent with what you have there. I think they need some minor amendments to it. Um, and that, that was introduced to those constitutional officers.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second for discussion. Mr. Attorney, when did the, did the actual new fee come into effect?
Large. I, I don't know the date that it was actually, uh, October one?
October one. I, I, I think we've already implemented the, the new fees as of October one.
I've had some questions about that.
We go to the sheriff.
Addition to the, the, the fees on the beach driving haven't changed in quite some time, going back historically through the ordinances. I think it was ninety-seven. But there was also the horse, uh, or the equine ordinance that you adopted at the same time. There was a question among staff of whether or not it was solely with regards to beach driving fees that you wanted to change. And I, I figured I'd ask, you know, understand your intent. You changed the ordinance on both those fees at the same time last time. Is it your intent to keep the horse permit fees the same as at what they currently are?
I, I think that was the intent, Chairman, but it's open to discussion with this board of whether you want to charge the same fees for horses as you, for, and the sheriff can shed a little light on what more issues he has, either with vehicles or, or horses. But, uh, I think the intent was to leave the horses the same price. So, we'll go with that, Chairman.
The last item with the, sorry, go ahead.
Got a motion.
There's-
Not yet. I could do it.
If, if there's no change, then I don't know if you are, make a motion if you're not going to change it.
We did that on the, on-
Okay, let's go.
The last item on the beach driving is with regards to, um, there was discussion about trying to possibly get that outside the county facility. Um, I know the county staff and several of the department heads have met and discussed implementing that, um, and the logistics of actually getting it outside the county facility, outside of county staff and putting it in, um, the community. Um, ultimately, it came back that, you know, cost and the analysis of how to implement that program would not be beneficial to the county. Um, and we wanted to report back to you all that, uh, from that roundtable, that's where we ended up. We're going to, the sheriff, uh, has discussed on how they're going to go patrol the beaches and check for the actual, uh, weekend passes. Um, Ms. Jenkins has carbon copies, uh, being revised for the new fees. Um, so we all have a plan in place to implement this new fee structure.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Beach driving permits. Beach driving permits. All right, just Mr. Jaeger second it. Michael Moore, uh...
Right.
Or comments?
I, I didn't know if we had carried that motion, but I did make a motion on the...
So we never passed about the permits?
About the...
To get a TDC to, permission to go out and...
Yeah.
I got a motion by Mr. Jaeger.
Second by Mr. Michael.
I'm catching up, man. Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, uh, second by Mr. Michael Moore, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Any public comment with regards to the beach?
Do we have any public comments? Going to the beach driving permit?
Mr. Chairman, number four, and commissioners, um, as you recall, last year Bay Medical entered an interlocal agreement with Gulf County for Mexico Beach servicing the EMS, and our response and service to Mexico Beach. Uh, recently, Bay County took over from Bay Medical, those EMS services, and I've been working with the county attorney in Bay County to get an interlocal before you all. You receive three thousand dollars per month for providing those services, a flat fee. We had that agreement with Bay Medical. All we're doing now is going into an interlocal with Bay County. Um, what you have in front of you is an interlocal, very standard, very, uh, simple, uh, it's their obligation, uh, for mutual aid, and also that they'll pay the county three thousand dollars a month going forward. I can get you all to approve that so we can transition it from the hospital to the county.
No, the, you know, they, they may wanna let us, this Gulf County just incorporate Mexico Beach in Gulf County, and then we wouldn't have to go through all these interlocal. No, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Michael Moore. Do I have any comments from the audience?
Question, right, well, Mr. Whitfield, that, since we got that implemented, it's...
Yes, we...
It's working good, isn't it?
We're in the black.
In the black on Mexico Beach, that's good. I wish we were available with others, okay.
Got a second by Mr. Michael Moore, do I have anything from the public? Got a, uh, motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Michael Moore, any opposed? Opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number five in your packet is, um, an update and a report to you all with regards to the Restore Act. Um, most recently, on October ninth and October seventeenth, your Restore Committee have met, know the, um, some of the commissioners have attended. Um, we've called the committee back to comment on the Treasury regulations that were sent out in the beginning of September. The deadline to the Treasury on the public comments is November fifth. Uh, the Gulf Consortium is assembling a meeting and talking this Friday. Uh, Mr. Jaeger will be attending, and, uh, not only the Gulf Consortium, but then the eight disproportionate counties afterward. Um, the Restore Committee has met, um, reviewed the Treasury regulations, also, uh, reviewed extensive volumes of other commentary from throughout the region. Um, and what we've done is we've assembled their comments, uh, as well as some of the staff's, staff's observations. I know it's two plus hours into the meeting, and I know you don't wanna hear me read this entire commentary and letter, but it is the recommendation, EMS recommendation of Restore Committee, that we submit these comments, we are gonna submit them to Ms. Blakely, uh, general counsel for the Gulf Consortium. We're also gonna submit them to, uh, the US Treasury, uh, prior to the deadline, so Gulf County's Restore Committee and Commission are represented and their comments are included. Um, most importantly, what we've expressed is, in the process and the application and the distribution, we've asked for more clarity in that process. Being a small, small rural county, the funding and the advanced payments to the county to implement these projects under the Restore Act, we have asked for additional time for all the counties to get additional comments. Once the Treasury reviews this, they'll have hearings with regards to these Treasury rules. This is a new process, and this is landmark legislation, and we've asked for the ability to have all the counties review what they do modify and come back to you all again. I know Pat Hardman is here, she's an active member of the Restore Committee, she wanted to have an opportunity to at least speak with regards to the Restore Act, um, and if she, if you would afford her a couple minutes before I move forward on the Restore, uh, recommendations.
While she's coming forward, Chairman, let me say, I had a conference call with Sarah Blakely, uh, yesterday, and basically, I think what, at the end of the day, some of the counties are interested in, uh, asking for additional time. Uh, I hate to ask for additional time when we've begged the Treasury to get these regs out to us, but to respond, but some of them didn't have all their questions answered because of the seventeen-day shutdown of the, of the federal government. So, uh, that may come about, so we may have a little bit more time if we wanna add to the comments or whatever, but...
And, and I would encourage the commissioners, we, we included a request for time, we also mirrored and asked to us to support the, uh, arguments of our sister counties. We also in, indicated the government shutdown has delayed a lot of the responses to the fed, feds, basically with regards to our comments and our questions on the Treasury rules. So, we've asked for that along with some of our other counties, and if you can, you'll familiarize yourselves with this. That may have some additional comments with regards to, uh, process and the actual Restore Act projects that we've reviewed.
Patricia Hardman, on the Restore Committee, um, these, we, we did find out that the Treasury doesn't usually do this type thing, and so that's one of the kind of glitches that's coming in. Uh, asking them for time, they don't have a timeline on their side, we have it on ours, and I hate to delay it any further. One of the things that's, that's coming out of this is Transoceanic has three hundred and twenty-three million already in the Treasury pots, uh, and the way that's gonna be divided out is in law, and approximately what will come out of that, if they'll go ahead and release that funds and not wait on the, um, the, the, the big money, the big settlement, um, you'd get about two point three million in, in the county from the standpoint of the county commission's share of what will be able to be used. Um, I just wanna let you know that your committee has, has listened to and has received thirty-two first-round applications, fifty-two second-round applications, and one extra, and eighty-five applications for grants in, from the county people here. Uh, your total grant request date, oh, y'all got your work cut out for you. Your total grant request is a hundred and sixty million dollars, uh, no, I'm sorry, is a hundred and fourteen million dollars. That does not include the county's nuro grant applications that have been put in, so this is a big one. Um, they range from a low of about twenty-six thousand up to seventeen point five million. So it's a huge range. You've got wishes, you've got wants, and you've got needs, and, you know, according to whose hat's on there. Your committee has tried to be absolutely transparent, we've listened to everybody, we did not judge or make any ruling on anybody's end, other than give them advice as to whether or not it met the criteria of the grant itself. So, we're gonna have to come back and ask you to help us out a little bit more with getting more specific if we, if the, uh, if they decide to go with the, uh, uh, distribution of these first funds. Uh, I think we've got some excellent questions for them. The, the first rule coming out was very broad, very vague, and we've asked for some clarifications, like, you know, you're gonna be responsible for policy and procedures, but we don't know what the policy and procedures are. You, you've got timelines on us, but you've got no timelines on the Treasury, so things like that that are in the commentary, and I think they're well, the, the staff has done a great job, and the lawyer, great job on that. But basically, we are gonna have to come back and say, now, the scope's on for us, uh, you know, what, what do we want to look at, and we're probably going to need a little outside advice as we get down to actually grading or, or coming up with a formula, because we want it transparent, we want it totally and completely, um, unbiased.
I, I think one of the things, uh, number one, I appreciate all the members that are, that are serving that, because it's a huge undertaking, and there's, it's a lot of confusion and that type thing. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that money that's already in there, what the consortium and what the individual counties are trying to do, is once they release that money, is allow us to use that to prepare our plans that are required by the Restore Act, uh, and, and at the end of the day, we'll have to have a, a, some type of consultant working with the, working with the folks. So, at some point, we're gonna have to go out and, and do an RFQ for a consultant for that, however, I'm not gonna spend any taxpayers' dollars until we get the, we get confirmed that we can use those first dollars for th, those plans, but it's required by the Restore Act that we do them, and that's one of the things that we're gonna ask for that first money.
I, I think we've, we've kind of been a wait and hold, and, and then just advise you that we will have to move, uh, when we move, and we'll have to have some outside help to, to work on the details, logistics and what have you.
I would suggest that the committee work with, work with, continue working with the county attorney on that issue, come up with maybe a, a, a request. Some of the larger counties have already hired theirs, uh, because they've got, they've got a flush of funds. We don't, so I'm waiting, we're waiting, basically waiting on the Treasury to allow us to use those funds.
And, and I'm not sure we've really needed one up to now. We're, we're ahead of the game, I think, um, from the standpoint of what the committee has put forward, and, uh, uh, at this point, I think we've, we've done as much as the consultants have done, uh, in the other counties, but at the point that we actually start grading and making decisions to bring to you, we do need some technical help. But I appreciate y'all moving forward with this.
Thanks, Dr. Pat. Um, along those lines of Restore Committee, if I can, uh, get the commission to authorize the issuance of this letter to the Treasury and to the Gulf Consortium, we'll send this out later today. Um, I'll start with that motion if I can.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger? Second by Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Do I have anyone for the audience? Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
The other, uh, motion, uh, along Commissioner Jaeger's comments were, the next step for the Restore Committee, um, is to start developing an RFQ. So with your permission and your direction, where it comes to the committee, if we can, we'll start putting that together, come back and have you ultimately approve whatever we put out the advertisement. There's no, nothing comparing the commission to, it can be open-ended, but to be able to start the process so that we're ready to put it out the advertisement when you all authorize the committee to do so. If I can have a motion to instruct the committee to do that in the, uh, coming month or so.
I, I think that's appropriate, I think that's our next step, and we don't have to even make the decision on that consultant until we've, we've got the money. So I'll, I'll move to do that.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger? Second? Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, I need a second?
Sorry.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have, uh, do I have any opposed? Do I have anything from the audience? Do we have anything from the audience? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number six in your packet is the, uh, notice we sent out for the Habitat Conservation Multi-Species Plan that we've been awarded a grant in Gulf County for. Part of the agreement that we had in the grant program was to start to do the organizational meetings, um, and develop the plan so we can, uh, start implementing, or assembling the team, and the, uh, partners are gonna be part of the, uh, implementation process. Last Thursday, uh, the Habitat Conservation Organizational Meeting was called over in EOC, uh, at eight-thirty in the morning. We had a, it was well-attended, I believe over twenty people from the community and, uh, Fish and Wildlife Agency, and various state and federal agencies were in attendance, as well as county staff. Um, it was a productive meeting, uh, there was a lot of comment and input from Fish and Wildlife that had done this grant in other communities, um, and ultimately, it was a recommendation of that organizational meeting that we developed a technical advisory committee. On the second page behind that notice, under number six, there's a recommendation from your meeting last week with regards to forming that TAC, um, and we have both, uh, Fish and Wildlife representatives, as well as county staff. So that technical advisory committee will be to, uh, start with the structure of an RFQ, where the technical advisor to help us with the grant program. Um, with your approval, we will form that assistance committee, and we'll start working towards developing that to come back to you all.
So move, Mr. Chairman, so we can start talking about the mouse.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have anything from the audience? We have a, um, motion by Mr. Mike, Mr. uh, Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Bryant, any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm getting there. Report authority, um, the new hearing date has been set under number seven in your packet. I've included a notice of hearing, uh, with regards to the new date before Judge Fischel for the various summary judgment motions for both the plaintiffs and the defendants. It's set for January twenty-third, it's a Thursday, one-thirty, here in Gulf County. I wanted to bring it to your attention so you know that, how, how that calendar is progressing, um, and all parties will be in attendance at that. Um, the next item in your packet is number eight, uh, is a limited maintenance agreement, um, consistent with county policy that was adopted a year and a half ago, for the county to do work, um, on private property in cooperation with, uh, landowners. Um, what we're seeking now is a limited maintenance agreement to permit the county and the county staff to work with Duke Energy and the property owner, Rialto Group, otherwise, it's a much longer name, they're a limited liability company, but it's Rialto Capital Advisors, is the property owner out of Miami, Florida, that owns the, uh, facility up along Light Keepers Drive, where the power source is for the Beacon Hill sign. Um, and in a very abbreviated version, we've had Duke Energy, we've had the local portfolio manager for Rialto Group, we've had Rialto Group, um, and county staff all worked to identify the power source to that sign so it can be taken down. Um, they've done, they have done that. Mr. Pickles actually had permission from the property owners in Miami that we secured to go on the property with, uh, his tech advisor, find the power source, and now we're seeking permission to have the county participate with Duke Energy and the property owner to get the sign down, but also at the same time safely and properly move the power source that runs and bores under that Light Keeper Drive. With your permission, the chairman will sign this limited maintenance agreement, we'll give it to Mr. Greg Hogan in Miami, have him sign it, and then we can move forward with ideally getting that sign down.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have anything from the floor? Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Uh, ship policy, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, speaking with Mr. Lowery, uh, we have several, we have actually a lot of, um, past ship participants over the last ten years, um, that have expired the ten-year period in which they, um, under our HAP plan, they are obligate, they are entitled to each year a ten percent reduction in that as part of our HAP plan. Um, it's not written in the actual loan structure or the agreements, but we have several, uh, former ship participants who have expired that ten-year period, but it's not written in the agreement. What we want to do today is request a formal policy you've all adopted, which was hardships, allowing Mr. Lowery, Mr. Butler, myself to review, uh, distressed properties. We wanna expand that policy, that if there are applicants or participants over the last ten years that have now expired and met those criteria, that we have the ability to release them from that lien.
Absolutely, we need to do that. We need to clean up some of the books, so to speak, with that, and that would do that. You need to inform them of the...
Yeah, and I don't know if Brett has some additional comment.
One thing I wanted to mention is, we, we've got ship liens that go back to ninety-four, ninety-seven, that were purchased assistant liens that don't even have an expiration date on it. So those liens stay out there forever. Um, that's our issue we're running into, and, uh, had several, several phone calls over, s- since I've been here, uh, with that issue, and, uh, it'd be nice to clean it up.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger? Second by Mr. Mike, uh, Michael Moore, do I have anything from the audience? Do I have anything from the audience? Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, I got a second by Mr. Michael Moore, do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, pursuant to statute two-eighty-six, uh, subsection oh-one-one, uh, with regards to noticing meetings, I'd like to, I'm, I'm requesting, uh, the ability for, to founder with the chairman and the commission to call a closed session meeting for the, uh, the commission to meet with the notified staff and a court reporter, uh, to discuss, to discuss, uh, litigation and litigation expenditures permissible under the statute. Um, with working on the calendar with county staff, if I can, uh, find a reasonable date, notify, notice the meeting, and then call the closed session meeting to bring that to your attention and discuss those expenditures.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
I need a motion.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Mike Daniels, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on October third, you all had an emergency meeting with regards to the Emergency Management Response and Center. Uh, the met, the meeting was, uh, not adjourned, it was recessed to keep it open so you all could come back. Um, we're here on the twenty-second. I'd ask you all now to work with the clerk's office so we can close that out and formally adjourn the meeting, so we can note that for the record and we can move forward. Ms., uh, Summers can do her minutes.
So you need a motion to adjourn that meeting?
Please.
So, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger? Second by Mr. Mike, uh, Michael Moore, do I have anything from the floor? Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Michael Moore, do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries. Chair? Ms. Bryant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If you would please, we have, uh, Mr. Catherine who needs to ask permission. As you know, I have to do a budget for the Department of Agriculture in July, which is nowhere near around when our budgets are complete. And so every October before November 1st, I have to do a budget amendment. And I have a budget amendment on the local and a budget amendment on the state that I need approved individually by the board and signed by the chairman.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Mr. Michael Moore?
I would like to say, Mark, you've done a great job in this case. As much rain as we had in July and for, I mean, worse, I've had even calls from the Cape that said, "This is the best year we've ever seen." So y'all doing a good job.
All right, appreciate it.
Do I have anything from the audience? Got a motion by Mr. Yeager? Got a second by Mr. Michael Moore? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? No opposed? Motion carries.
At the, at the last meeting, Mr. Hammond, our jail administrator, had a written statement,
and I would like to just briefly address that. I have requested a copy of the written statement, which Mr. Hammond has refused to provide. So I will just touch on some of the items that were, were put out. I'll tell you, I will, as a county commissioner, continue to look at expenses on the budgets of various departments in the county. I think that's my job as a commissioner. And when we're at a budget meeting and we're discussing what we've discussed in the past regarding budget, I may touch on those items again, even though the board may have voted against them, just as part of discussion. And I also believe that that's my job as a commissioner. Now, I think that Mr. Hammond's presentation was inappropriate. And many of the things that he stated, I'm not quite certain what he's talking about or where, where he's getting his information. But what, what I will say is that my examination of the jail was a budgetary item. It was about the budget. It wasn't about the employees or any kind of an attack personally on Mr. Hammond. I am not out looking for people to sue the county. I'm flabbergasted that Mr. Hammond would suggest that. I get calls from folks regarding their concerns with various issues of the county. I'm sure all of the commissioners do. And I will speak to people, employees, families of folks who are in the jail. The list that Mr. Hammond mentioned, none of them are excluded. I will talk to them if they call me and want, and want to talk. It is not true, and this is a side issue, but it's not true that state law requires every county to have a jail. I think we need to be careful when we're sitting in a county meeting and stating what the law requires if it is incorrect. I'm not blowing up the Florida Sheriff's Association. They have an interest in what goes on in our jail. They have been given the responsibility of maintaining the inspections of the jails in this state, and that was given to them by the Florida Legislature. That is their interest. As far as probation goes, I haven't looked at probation since we first made the move. I didn't know that the jail employees were working overtime to take care of probation. And I'm not certain about the profit. I think that's something that we'll have to look at further down the line. But, but I haven't looked at probation since we first made the change. But I would be interested, as we get further into this, to see what the impact is on the clerk's office for collection efforts with court fees and fines, but I think that has yet to be determined. One thing I would like to say is, I want to thank the community for the overwhelming support that I have received. All of the calls, people stopping me, coming to see me, and I will continue to, to fight for what I believe is right for this county. And I think all the commissioners should, even if we don't agree. That's why we have five and not one. And I think that we all should take that stand. And I have had just an overwhelming response. I, I may not get to each person individually. I try, I'm not perfect, but I do the best that I can to respond or to get the proper staff member to respond if the issue is a narrow issue. And I will, as I, at the end of my first year, I will continue to work for the people of Gulf County. Thank you.
I'm good. Just briefly, I had a call on Iowa Road about, yeah, that's up there. Wanted me to ride Iowa Road and, and I think I spoke to Jake about, let's, we need to get to that as quick as we can. That road's pretty terrible. But over and beyond that, I know that we, we run into situations that it takes, it rains and it takes us a while to get to them. But previously, I think Calhoun County may have even sent us a letter. I know that they originally contacted me and asked us, tasked me to try to get Gulf County to get the rest of that road paved to, to the Calhoun County line. They've got all their road paved to the Gulf County line, and then we got a section that's not paved, and then we've done some work with scrap and scop on the other. And I know that our grant writer's not here, but if we can put that in, in, in our process of trying to get a grant for that road to extend that out, I mean, it's evacuation for some folks, and it would extend it up to Calhoun County where it'd be paved the entire way.
Got something for you, just so you all know.
All right.
That is Mr. Mike Daniels.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I apologize. At any rate, I think, you know, I've talked to Jake about, you know, getting to it when we can, and I don't want to pull it off somewhere else. So just, we're making the rounds the best we can. We've still got one machine just down and all those kinds of things. But another road would be the 13-mile road that cuts from C-30 over to 98. It would be evacuation route, so I think we need to put that maybe on our list at some point for scrap or scop monies too.
Yeah. One major problem with Iowa Road is the teenagers with those big, poor, old trucks.
I, I saw that.
Yes.
I saw that.
All the new signs are shot all to pieces.
It's in a hunting reserve.
At any rate, if we can, if we can maybe put a little focus on, on the grants for those two roads, that'd be great because it'd be.
What, oh. Put that in a water management grant.
Or it was. Part of it. And, and Water Management District, I don't think does those grants anymore. It was like a two or three-year program where they'd get stormwater runoff out of the rivers and that type thing, but I don't know that there's any money left in Water Management District for that.
They only applied to the area that hooked in real river, as it got polluted from the river, it didn't apply. So we did an area that a river got water management to pay for, but they're not doing it now.
We've got, probably what, four miles? It seemed longer than that, as slow as I had to drive because of it, but it, it's a pretty good section. But I think that DOT would be very interested in that particular project because it would connect the Calhoun County and Gulf County.
That was the goal anyway.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Chair has nothing today? Can I get a motion?
Well, you might.
I'm trying to get out of here, guys. I got Mr. Mike, I got Mr. Michael Moore over here rubbing off on me. Okay, do we have anything from the public? Yes, sir. Can you come on up?
First of all, my name's Lander Burrows. I live over street, Florida. And number one is, I know we got three minutes. You don't have too many people very happy out at Over Street right now. I've called you three times myself in reference to the ditches. I've got two people that come out, I'm sorry, said they come out. I have one phone call that you have represented, okay? This guy tells me that these ditches has never been dug at Over Street. No way. I grew up at Over Street. My father sat up here for about thirty years, and I know he had them things dug out every three months. We need you to personally, and I know all you gentlemen and everybody else in this place will agree, the water don't want uphill, and I know health reasons. You talk about health reasons? Okay, I got one for you. We cannot let all the summer swimmers do our lawn work or anything. You talk about West Nile, okay? Mosquitoes all over there because of the fact the ditches are full of water. I've seen you personally out there one time is when you knocked on my door. You said, "My name is Joanne Bryant. I'm under for county commission. Can I have your vote?" Unfortunately, yes, ma'am. I thought you was going to be real good. I honestly did. You know what? I even went through all through Over Street politics for you. I called you three times and never got a response from you. I've left messages over here. Nobody responded. What are we going to do about this situation?
Mr. Burrows, when you contacted me, I was out of town that weekend. I asked Mr. Lewis to contact you, and he did, and he was out there, and our folks were out there. Now, the, unfortunately, the ditches have water in them. We've had a huge rain event this year, and the water table is high. I have to rely on the expertise of the staff that we have. And Mr. Lewis knows quite a bit more about drainage than I do, fortunately. And I do come out to Over Street. I'm sorry I haven't seen you. If you want me to come and knock on your door again, I will. But I did have your issue about the drainage ditches addressed.
Unfortunately, I'm not the only one. I mean, everybody around Over Street, they don't have no, nothing, they can't have time for them. Unfortunately, I'm stuck in the chair. I got plenty of time. I'll be more than happy to show you all them ditches, and I know the ditches don't, water don't go uphill. They say, "Are we coming? We clean out your ditches." Big deal. I mean, what's that going to do? You got water coming right here at our coves. They clean the ditches. Then you got uphill battle with water. What's going to happen? It's going to come flood our area. I live in an area, which is in a lowland lying area. What happens is, backs up into my yard. All right, you know, and a lot of other people out there are complaining about mosquitoes. We can't go outside, we can't enjoy, you know, the kids can't enjoy it. Our kids come in, my grandkids come in with mosquito bites. This is two, two-thirty in the afternoon, hey, three, three, I mean, late at night, expected, but not all day long. I mean, West Nile, think about it, ma'am. And go look, go look at these ditches, please.
I under, and I have been out there looking at the ditches, just because I have not seen you personally. I've spent quite a bit of time out there in Over Street with Mr. Lewis and with other folks. Now, I was out of town when you called about your ditches, and Mr. Lewis did come out. Now, we have issues with water all over District Three. My guess is all over the county because we have had a tremendous rain event this year.
Sure, there's been water. I'm not denying that.
We're doing the best that we can, and I continue to rely on our staff who, they know what they're doing with the ditches.
But you know what?
I'm happy to get back with Mr. Lewis, and we could come out and take a look at the ditches again. But he's the one that knows, he knows more about the ditches than I do. We're happy to take a look at them again.
When we first moved out there, when we had our ditches dug every three months, it kept water flowing, okay? And I'm not, you know, I'm not up here asking for money. I'm, I'm just asking for everybody to do their jobs. Me nor a lot of other people asking, and I'm not trying to be derogatory. I'm trying to be, I'm very respectful, okay? I won't say a bad word about anything. But I would personally be happy to walk with you on them ditches and show you exactly what I'm talking about.
I'm happy to talk to you if you.
I have a motion for more time.
I, I don't know that we need more time, Mr. Burrows. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, and we can go from there.
I'd like it to be on the board so everybody knows, because everybody on this board gets to pay the same amount as you do, and if you want me to sit down, that's fine, but.
Well, Mr. Burrows, I am doing my job.
I have talked to, I understand you have more dollars, ma'am. I understand that. But each one of these commissioners that I've always talked to had time to talk to me. If I call them, I'm not going to say, yeah.
I have a motion for more time. I got a motion by Michael Moore, second by Mr. Yeager. No disrespect, but that is the rule. Give them more time.
My concern is the kids, okay? They like to go out, okay, y'all, y'all don't like over here, you have the things about the baseball park and stuff. We have kids out there too. And everybody knows West Nile is bad. I'm not saying it's been hit here in St. Joe or anything like that. But these ditches have been flowing since 1972. We, like I said, we moved in, they dug the ditches. The man that you had called to talk to me on the phone has said, "Look, I've been here 29 years. I've never heard of this." Wrong. I explained to him, "Sir, we started out here in 1972. Them ditches was dug every three months." Okay? The water cannot run uphill. There is no way. And who are we going to hold responsible when one of these kids die in West Nile or something? Are we going to, can we hold you responsible?
Listen, Mr. Burrows, I feel that our staff is, is a great staff. Our mosquito control, let me speak. Our mosquito control, our, our roads and ditches, the staff that handles that public works, they do a great job, and I will continue to rely on the advice that I'm given by our staff on the condition of the ditches, and the purpose of the ditches is to move the water from the roads. And we will do everything we can to assist you within it being a public purpose. And there are water issues all over this community. I hear all the time from folks that are frustrated with the water. I understand. I have water issues in my community as well, and we're doing the best we can. But the staff is doing a great job, and I will continue to work with them on the issues in Over Street and in the rest of District Three.
If you could just hear, I mean, they all come to me, because they know that time, okay? And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be blunt. I'm not trying to be rude, okay? But I'm sorry, I don't have money falling out of my pockets and can't say, we're going to dedicate so-and-so's people. I'm speaking for the people who are, I'm paying taxes. I sat back here, I opened my mouth, which I guess I shouldn't have, about these contractors. But here I say, I'm paying my tax dollar, and I want something done, and everybody else out there does too. Issues, last time I talked to them, three months ago, guess what? They're on St. Joe Beach. I understand St. Joe Beach, your community, the sheriff's community, everybody's communities have problems right now. You can watch it right now, and it hasn't been raining that hard lately. And you can see water in these ditches, this, this deep still, this deep.
Water table is high, remaining high. Down of water.
I've been on St. Joe Beach. I've never seen it that high there. I go other places, I haven't seen it that high.
Mr. Butler, could we get you to check with maintenance so we can address this issue? And if it's something that we need to take care, we can get it taken care of, if it's something that we need to bring back to the board?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I was sitting in your home, and your mother and your father and all great friends and all, and went out, and here's a gentleman over here from Sanford. Took a tractor out, was going to clean it, but you picked the ditches below the coves, like you stated, water won't run uphill, so you got water trapped.
Understand.
We took our, our work crews, and a lot of the coves would be, grass would be grown in them, or debris, and tried to clean those out, or shovel out a little there. Now, St. Joe Beach, you have sand out there, there up on the hill kind of, out where we at Over Street. I wish we could go out there and pick the whole thing up about four, five feet, and we'd be good shape.
Yes, sir.
But when this weather has slacked off, I have water standing in my yards, been there I don't know how long, and I'm high, I'm inland. But I have to agree with the commissioner.
Understand. I'm not saying, I'm not saying coves, sir. I'm not saying it's coves, sir. The coves are fine, but why stop the coves? My point is, what's backing us up? Once you leave them coves, everybody's, once you leave them coves, you're going down the road like this, and it's spilling up here. Coves are fine, but what's, what's going to rise as you're going down the road, you know, down the rest of the road, not they run coves? How's the water going to flow, Mr. Daniel?
I think, Mr. Burrows, I've got several issues in my district too with the storm water. And one of the things that our staff does, and they are good staff.
I'm not saying our staff's not.
I, I understand, but I, I think one of the things that I've got them to do in a couple of my areas is, is shoot elevations, and they can shoot those elevations. Some of these ditches don't necessarily need digging all the way. Some of them need backfilling in certain areas and digging in others.
Yes, sir, but if you look in certain places at Over Street, I can take you right Yes, sir, but if you look in certain places at Overstreet, I can take you right now, and I can show you what you're talking about needs to be leveled out. But I understand, I'm not talking about digging out the whole community, I'm not asking for tax money, I'm just asking for where these hills are built up, pushing the water back. You got what I'm trying to say, the perfect thing I'm trying to say. Number one is, the coves are fine, but you say the build-up places. This is what's building up, the build-up places. Don't go all the way down, God, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for them to be leveled off all in certain areas.
I think, I think at the end of the day, you know, if they shoot the shots, they're going to know where the high places are and where the low places are.
They're going to got to shoot the shots, but you got to go and shoot the shots first.
And we are working through those issues.
But that's what I'm asking Mr. Butler right now to get with staff.
Understand.
Mr. Chairman, we have been working on the whole area in Overstreet, and Mr. Butler is aware of some of the places that we've been working in, shooting those shots, and Mr. Lewis is doing a great job. Unfortunately, there's only a few people on the staff that do this work, and they have the entire county, and potentially, this new policy that everything is going through the county administrator will possibly help with that, that we can be certain that the work is being addressed in a manner of what's the priority. And I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Burrows. I appreciate you coming up here and expressing them.
It's just not me, you know, I mean, I'm not trying, like I said, Mr. Butler does a good job on everything he's done. I've known Mr. Butler for a long time. He goes out and does his job. I'm not disputing him, I'm not disputing any of the, anything that you're saying up there as far as people not trying to do their jobs. God, I've been at Overstreet now, I went in the military in 1986. We finally come back in, I'm sorry, 1979, we come back in 86. We bought a brand-new mobile home in 2006 and put it out at Overstreet. You know how much problems we've had with backup since I've been, or how many people I've seen actually come out until, you know, recently, going out, doing the ditches? I've been there six, seven years now, that minute.
I've been here in this position this last one year, and I'm doing the best I can to address all of the issues in District 3. Mr. Burrows, and the drainage issues in Overstreet are part of that, but they are, they've been going on for a long time, and we'll address as much of that drainage as we can, but we may not be able to fix it all. There's only so much that we can do as a county government.
At least try to do something, that's all I'm asking.
And we are, and we are working out in Overstreet.
I don't see anything, but I've lived there, and, hey, you see, I don't go nowhere. I stay home most of my time, and I'm telling you right now, I mean, I haven't seen nobody in that area. Long time I got one phone call, the dad wasn't there, was from your guy that worked for the county for 29 years, and he stated to me that them ditches have never been dug out. Well, I know for a fact it's not true. I've known Mr. McDaniels for years, he's known my family for years, okay? I'm not, you know, I apologize if I sound rude to you, I'm not trying to sound rude to you. I'm just trying to get our kids and everybody else out there from getting some, you know, I like to go outside and sit in my swing. You know, if my wife was there, she would tell you the first thing I'd do, I'm lazy. I'll go sit in my swing, about 10 minutes, I'm asleep. 20 minutes later, I'm starting to get bit by mosquitoes because, you know, water problems. And please, just go out there and look what I'm talking about on the bill, that's all I'm asking for, just like Mr. McDaniels was talking about. It's build-up, it's not just in front of the coves, it's built up in the middle of the ditches. You can't stop in the middle of the ditches. If you're going to leave it in the middle of the ditches with build-up, like he said, there's high land. All I'm asking is, please, if there was a way to go up there and cut them, I'm not sitting in all Overstreet, I'm saying level it, you know, just the places that need to be leveled for the water to flow. I mean, we all pay our tax dollars, and I'm not coming up here and asking for money. I'm just, let's put it this way, I'm asking for the whole community of Overstreet. Many peoples ask me, hey, you know, it's getting ridiculous out here, because all these kids are playing, and every time you turn around, somebody has something to complain about.
Mr. Burrows, like I said, I can promise you that we're going to get someone out there to check on it, District 3, Ms. Bryant, she's going to make sure that we get someone out there, we got Mr. Butler working on it, so right now the whole board know about it. We're going to get someone out there to check on it and get back with Mr. Butler and what we need to do to take care of the situation, if it's something that we could do, we're going to do it whatever we can do.
That's all we're asking. We're not asking for the world, we're just asking for the places that are high land so the water can flow.
Yes, sir.
I mean, everybody out there, you know, like I said, I'm speaking for just about half of Overstreet. Because we got, we got together recently, just a couple of weeks ago, because I've tried now for three months to talk to somebody.
We're going, we're going to get with, get with them, Ms. Bryant is on it, Mr. Butler's on it, they get with maintenance, and I promise you that we will get someone out there to look into it.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
That's all I can ask for, you know, that's all I'm asking.
That's all that the board can do right now, and it's just give you that, give you our word that we're going to get someone out there to take care of.
Same before, looking out for, seeing somebody.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. James Christie, Port St. Joe. First of all, I like to make references to water. As, you know, Warren, you know, we have water problems all in the county, and it's the nature of the beast. I mean, you know, it's just nature. Certainly, we don't have any sewer systems, and I have a cul-de-sac on the end of my street, and Pat Hardman is actually my neighbor, and we put money into this cul-de-sac to make a plate or a saucer, and we try to drain our water into that particular hole, and it's worked quite well. But I can assure you that that water stays in there for months. So referencing your point, Ms. Bryant, that the water table's high, and, you know, obviously it's a nuisance and it's issues, but it's just something we have to deal with since we live here, and we make these choices to live here. But I think that you guys really do a good job, and I think the staff does a good job. So I wanted to kind of put a balanced field out on here on this discussion. Second of all, I like to change the subject a little bit, but on your meetings, your commissioner meetings, I wish that you guys would take into consideration some communication and review of the budget. And with regards to that, I was at the last budget meeting when you guys finalized it, and Mr. Butler made a comment, and I think it was something along the lines, we actually spend more than what we take in. And with that being true, I think that, you know, maybe a monthly review of really what your allocation is on your particular expenditures and what actually you're spending, to see if you're in line or out of line, and more importantly, to look at these variances. And if the variances are out there, I think you should be really talking to the public and seeing what you can do as far as corrective actions, and see how you can make up that money down in like month six or month eight, and get it back in line. But I think if you just kind of be a little bit more open, and not like, I'm not saying that that you have anything to hide, but I think that as far as an educational tool, that you go forward and start using some of this as communication to the public, and so that they've had a lot more stronger comfortability with what you're doing as far as managing this budget. And I think if you do that, and if you get into a situation like you did where you had to raise taxes like what you did on this last part, you might have a little bit more acceptance on that. So I just, you know, in summary, I just think, hope that maybe you would consider using some of your time to actually discuss the budget. So, thank you.
Have more comments from you? I get a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, you got a second?